Hey, everyone. Welcome to our October working session. So our first topic, our guest is not here from traffic. So we'll get it back. So let's go on to old business, discuss the schedule amendments for December action. Oh, he's gonna do a minutes for the construction. This hour. That these are the fees for next year for our various things, activities, and services, and serving whatnot. Any thoughts? Next year, right?
What we provided in the packet is the current. Okay, so if any adjustments going to be made, we need to know to be able to do that at the December regular meeting.
Basically, we're just asking the department heads to review your sections and identify anything that we are not at least breaking even on. And get your amended changes into us by the end of November.
No, we decided we won't at least break even. We don't want to lose money on these.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
Anything stand out? We're, I mean, athletic, field wise, obviously, we have a couple. So we rewrite fees for, but they also have major. I mean, baseball just completed one or proposing another major soccer is proposing a major. Football is looking at doing major. So that's what I want. They're gonna be out of a scoreboard here soon. And then there it's gonna be also. They're gonna bring up turf again. Which, or if they're gonna kick in irrigations, that needs to be looked at for both those fields. Which was a major contributor towards their non-payment. Well, fee in lieu essentially. Well, on a current contract was all the irrigation on lower meadow and the.
Lower Meadows, the one maybe got the problems for.
Yeah, it was a company just, yeah, and then everything reworked. It's all up and running again now.
What was your, what's your answer?
It would be nice to have, but it's.
Yeah, and they, right now, so that for football, they use it. Six weeks, five years, seven weeks, the game day deal. And most where if you had turf, you can use a spring, fall soccer, lacrosse, it could be a multi-use, multifaceted.
So you favor taking a much part of it.
There's the traditional with the grass and it's not such an issue with kids with, you know, with knee issues and those kind of injuries. They're not the, you know, professionals, not hurting them bad, but they're more something for you, but. There is some maintenance in terms, but it would eliminate any of the, you know, our irrigation practices, the fertilizing, the, you know, this is disease control. It's that figure, those old, you know, old terps have. The, you know, it does think that, you know, rain or shine type fields, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know.
That's a big thing. We give a lot of rain. We shut down the field because this whole place on the terrace.
There rained a fine aim last week. You got almost four inches of rain. If that happened on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, there was no way they would have been able to play on a Saturday. It was destroyed.
Is there a lot of demand for that field outside of the? Old games or tiger pride?
I don't think the tiger pride, but I think for.
If it was a combined soccer, cross, cross or ball, you have under lights would have.
And I don't know how they, right now, this football's concession, so I don't know how that would have very reworked for all of the units of the session. It is a nice facility for football. They do the nice extension. There is nice bathrooms down there now that weren't there six years ago, seven years ago. But I mean, it does. You open up the use of that facility. If it is a nice facility, it's nice to use, like press boxes, so. Yeah, and if you do that, you would probably rework the tracks or walk the track will probably be improved as well. For the days that, you know, if that'd be like your border around the field, so there is benefit to it. There is obviously initial cost to install. And there is some upkeep that's been booming through and there, but overall would be a much more used slowly than this right now. But right now, they soccer shots and some people use it lightly in the spring. But the rest of the year, it's there until fall.
Any tiger pride accepted? They would like to turn that?
It's been brought up before. It's always been talked about, but I think last time we put a price tag on it, it was a million dollars.
Yeah, baseball is, you know, and then they want turf too.
I know we're gonna include baseball on the.
Yep, so football guys too.
System place. Or because of baseball turf would be the same way, you know, if they had one or two fields, that way rain or shine, they could be using it and the other ones can still take, take traditional, but. It does make it up for better use, more use, I mean, rain or shine.
Yeah, if you have been over to who, like, they have a nice two-field pool net up. And that one, they came in at like 1.75. For two, that was a couple of years ago, so. Yeah, I mean, it's been open, yeah, probably three years, four years and a half, two years, yeah, yeah, so that's probably been bid out for at least four or five years.
There, is there a lifespan of a turf field, like thirty years or twenty?
Ten, ten, fifteen.
On the actual turf, I mean, your infrastructure there, you just take up the old turf, put a new one in, and it has a lot of that recycled rubber, so you suck all that and you start to.
Like the drainage and all the.
The drain, it would stay, they just blew, blew a new one down. So yes, there is a turnover at some point, but it's not about the initial, your infrastructure is in. Again, it depends on how much use you want it to be as well. You see a lot of, a lot of the old structures have or not. So, you know.
That's a big break in.
But I mean, NAI uses their turf all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, it is probably six hours a day, every day, getting used over there. I mean, I've had practices over there until ten o'clock at night. And, you know, the high school teams are on it right after school. They try to take a, I think they try to keep less people on your high school stadium field, but that NAI field is used heavily. All year. So, and that's probably been three years that that one's been over there.
Anything else for departments? Yeah, I'll list them. All right, the tabs. You gotta be done.
Yeah. There we go. Getting started. We can get one of those thermometers. We can just borrow, we can just see. Hey, they replace theirs.
Okay, and in November, we'll have this. It'll be one of the.
He was still not here, but.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so that's Jason on a new business. So our every regular.
That was it. The turn called it wrong. Not getting first down, but CEO shows.
I guess, in terms of the agenda, we've got a heck page or so, but did want to talk about two that are on here as resolutions. Tim just now, you have Sean. People start first with the one you did get an email about the storm sewer easement agreement for a single-family residence constructed on Sturridge Drive. Several months ago, they came in for a building permit that's you want to be developed, a part of a coverage phase seven, wherever they are now. Single-family lot that was impacting the storm sewer from the street at the time, so they needed to reroute it around the house, and that was not something we typically do. Typically, our easements are set as part of our plan for the overall community, and then we have completion of the infrastructure. We inspected it throughout the process. We accept it through an ordinance. Reference the reported plan and comes public infrastructure. Sometimes it's just a note on the plan. Seen before, like with the easement encroachment issue, just they show drainage easement, so no agreement behind it or other. So we went back and forth, well, what do we do with this? Do we have a dedicated plan? Do we accept it by ordinance? Do we do anything? We just came up that they provided an as-built, we told them we'd do something, we didn't know exactly what, but you got, they got their building permit contingent on them dedicating the easement and the pipe to the borough, across the borough. Anything like that. So we put together an easement agreement. Just a little bit modified from our standard where we, you know, see there's an issue in the community and we need to get an easement from property owners. We might put in some pretty loud language to convince them to do that. Don't want to pay anything for it, but we do want to alleviate a problem. So we might provide insurance and identify them and move all sorts of bells and whistles. So we sort of stripped that down. They are the ones giving it to us. Part of their building permit requirement. And we have a provision in the Borough Code that we are to accept for acquire property and property rights through resolution. So that is motion number five. And we're putting some finishing touches on the actual easement agreement, but it didn't make it into the packet, although the resolution did. So you do have that email to be put in place as well. We have not provided it to residents just yet. They are very anxious to get this done and proved. Okay, with this process, we would provide it to them so that they would just sign it under the time sensitivity and pressure of it, so not negotiating backwards and all that stuff. And then if council approves it, October 15th could record it there. Here, you're pretty much it. All right. The other resolution is right above is, you know, we were, we had an internal meeting just to get Zach brought up to speed on this over ten-year saga. This is one part of it, and Laura, I know you've accused yourself from the prior litigation discussions and everything else, but this is post litigation and part of the settlement agreement was that they would do, instead of our usual ordinance and maintenance agreement for adoption of the public infrastructure, namely the streets, that they would do deeds of dedication, which is not something the borough typically does for roads, but townships do it a lot, because it's provided for in the township codes. Not unusual, it does avoid payment of transfer taxes because it's qualification. And it is appropriate for this type of scenario. So this was something they were supposed to give us this time last year. As things often are, as council recall, our Justin Hines, who passed away in December, you've been following up and trying to get this done at that time, picked it up into the spring. And it was activity in the neighborhood last month or so where the Antideck was going out, placing those final survey monuments and doing the drawings for what the roads will be. So they provided us with their executed versions of the deeds of dedication. Also adopted by resolution rather than ordinance. We're doing some final checking. Sean's still looking at the the meets and bounds and legal description, just to make sure there's nothing wonky there. But we are ready to proceed with that on the agenda. We're also part of that litigation, looking into some other wind-up items. Final things that were involved in the settlement. We do want Gary to get a chance to get out there and do a drive-through and see what we're accepting here because we're outside of the normal process where we have Sean out there and pounding on the developers to do the crack ceiling. They'll do the repairs before it gets the acceptance and then after as part of a maintenance. Checking, I'm gonna also check, forgot to. Although we checked, there's no taxes. There's sometimes a concern. There's a letter or a block number. It might have been an assessment, but these have always been assessed at zero dollars. We don't even need to do an exemption application. I do want to see if there's any mechanic's liens that were ever filed because of unpaid contract. One more thing we could do within the next week or so. Those are those two. Any questions on Parkland Farms, phase one and two and three? Okay, the other ones are just standard stockization for fire company payment, north of the library and the local library's budget. I'm not sure. I have a presentation that I it's like a director or some. That has to be done this.
Hey. Yeah, we.
Yeah, I can just stand here. Does that work? My voice carries enough normally. And I'm filling in for Jason Staley, who you are used to seeing. I have, I have been here before. Other times where Jason was unavailable. I'm the CEO of our wealth management group. And I'm also a twenty-year resident at Franklin Park.
Wonderful.
So appreciate everything that everybody does, because, you know, my wife and I really, we love this community. We love being a part of it. So thank you.
What section are you in?
Well, now you're getting into it. I'm not, I can tell you where I live and you might tell me the section. So we lived on Matterhorn kind of for nineteen years, and we just moved this year over by Acorn Park and Blueberry Hill. Chevy up drive. I mean, it's, there's like eight or nine houses on that road. So we moved there beginning of this year.
Good for you.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's been, it's been great. And I've got, still have one that's a junior in North Allegheny. He's my, he's my youngest. We've had, you know, two kind of grow up almost the whole time here, so.
Acorn Park will be a good place.
Yeah, I know there's a lot. I mean, I've seen some of the work. I think, I'm guessing the storm that came through kind of said a lot with all the trees. I mean, it seemed like there was a lot of tree work and that kind of stuff that had to be done. You know, we were, we were one of those groups that was out of power for a long time, but I certainly understand why, because there's just trees everywhere. So, you know, I'm sure you guys had a lot of conversations about all that stuff as well, so. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I did want to kick off. I do have good news. I have good news on the portfolio. But I also have good news as far as we've gone back and reviewed what we call our institutional and nonprofit fee schedule. And we made the decision to reduce your fee. So usually when you hear, I think, people say, hey, we've looked at the fee schedule. Now you're gonna get, you know, a fifteen percent increase. We're gonna be reducing that seventeen percent. So currently, you're at a flat forty basis points. And we're gonna be, that's gonna be at your current level down to thirty-three basis points. So before, where we were starting at forty, four tenths of a percent. We're now starting at thirty-five basis points, and then after ten million, it's dropping down from there. So you'll see, you know. It's thirty-five basis points up to ten million. The next ten million is a thirty basis point. So as you grow, you'll be at the thirty basis points for all the assets. So we value the relationship, you know, we look at what we feel is a fair fee, and, you know, that's what made us make the decision to reduce that. So that's that on a dollar basis is a little over ten thousand dollars a year and about twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's always, that's always nice to be able to come in versus the flip side of that, when you said, you know, you've got to say that, you know, fees are increasing. It's been a really good year for the portfolio. Pick this up just because my eyes aren't as good as they used to be, but when you look at the employee plan, it's up eleven point four percent year-to-date. The police plan at eleven point nine, so very similar returns. The employee plan's just a shy of four point seven eight million. And the police plan is at nine point eight five million dollars. So, you know, significant increases over the year. You know, I think we've been in this time period of kind of the hard-charging tech stock mega cap. And one thing we've seen this year, because we've always had diversified portfolio. So the international stocks are one of the highest performers this year. So our international stock positions are up about twenty-two percent. Our emerging stock positions are up over nineteen percent. We have a, we have in the portfolio a position called First Eagle Global. So, you know, I'd equate that to, you know, more value-oriented, similar to like, you know, securities like Berkshire Hathaway, but also has a gold component, because we felt it was good to have some of that representation in the portfolio. That, that position is up almost twenty-five percent year-to-date. So when, when you bring in the bonds, which have done fine, I mean, bond returns are anywhere from three to six percent, which is in line with what we'd expect. You know, that's what's really driven. So, you know, even though we have, you know, around a third or more of the portfolio and bonds that, you know, have three to six percent returns, because we have the international diversification, you know, we have returns that are more in line with what the S and P five hundred's been doing this year. So, you know, that's, that's really been significant for the year. And we did put money to work both in the police plan. We put a hundred fifty thousand dollars to work in the police plan. And seventy-five thousand dollars in the employee plan in early April. Since we put that money to work, that the portfolio is up a little over twenty-three percent. So that, you know, we're not always gonna be perfect with that, but that one worked out pretty well this year and has, and has been additive. When we look out into the future, you know, international stocks remain attractive. It's been one of those situations where we've seen kind of the spread of valuations between international stocks and, and US stocks get wider and wider. Now we're starting to see that pull back a little bit, and I think there's still room for international stocks to perform well. You know, I'd say if we, if we don't run into any kind of recessionary environment. And, you know, there's a lot of different things that, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, competing things going on in the, in the general world and markets. You know, I, I still say that small-cap and mid-cap stocks are also priced well. They, they would be maybe more negatively impacted if we didn't run into a recessionary environment. But, you know, when you compare how those are priced relative to kind of the, the tech stocks in that space, they look a lot more competitive. So that's another area where I think there's room for things to go on the positive side of the future. We still are getting very attractive yields. I mean, we went a long time in the stock market and in the bond market where yields were very low. It's great, you know, being able to earn five, six percent in bonds that are, you know, are really safe and stable compared to what you might get in the stock market. And that really, you know, works well to just create a base of stability in these portfolios. The other area where we still continue to see a spread that's bigger than historical, where we've been historically, is value versus growth. Growth is still looking more highly priced relative to value. If we continue to see, you know, the Navidas and these groups just keep kind of working their way further and further up. That spread could get wider, but, you know, there does tend to be gravity in the investing world and things that go up, don't go up forever. So we would expect over time there to be kind of closing of that gap, and, and I think we're well positioned inside the portfolios to handle that. You know, we've had a lot of wind at our back related to AI and the impact on business. I'd say probably some of that is already priced in. So if we don't start seeing, you know, the, the more significant impacts of the bottom line, that could be a risk of the future, just like markets pulling back. And then obviously, you know, the only other that kind of is top of mind is just in general, any political uncertainty and global uncertainty that still exists and, you know, kind of always exists, but gets dialed up, you know, kind of in different environments, in different areas of the world. But, you know, all in all, we've had, you know, a really good, you know, year by year by year run. I mean, I was just looking at the kind of the annual returns. And if you looked pulling up the police plan, you know, we're up eleven point nine percent this year. Last year, the portfolio was up ten point six percent. The year before that, twelve point four percent. The big down year, you might remember, twenty twenty-two was an area where there was nothing to hide. You know, interest rates went up, so bonds got hit pretty hard. They were down fifteen, sixteen percent. You know, stock market, US stock market was down almost twenty percent. International markets were down even more. So in that year, the portfolio was down about fourteen point six percent. The year before, twenty twenty-one, twelve point two, and then twenty twenty, ten point nine. So really, other than twenty twenty-two, where there was nowhere to hide, we've been able to get double-digit returns in every one of these years. And I think, you know, our expectation when we thought like long-term planning, if we could get, you know, growth rates of seven percent, that would be great, and your money's gonna double about every ten years. And, you know, I think we've been able to exceed that, and you can see that in, in where we stand today. Those were kind of my broad comments. Are there, is there anything that's particularly on anyone's mind, worries, concerns, questions?
How selective are you in the international market?
So we, we pay a lot of attention to, you know, number one, the manager. So we have managers that we're choosing, that we're looking for them to make some of the country-by-country decisions. And, and that's something that we're paying a lot of attention to, to see where do we have representation? Why are they, you know, in, in those areas getting, so, you know, I'd say that the managers that we're using that have boots on the ground and are seeing what those underlying countries are doing are, are doing that work a little bit on behalf, and then we're overseeing that to make sure that we're comfortable with those exposures. And, and we have no problem kind of pulling the trigger and making changes to those managers if we feel like that they're not doing a good job of that.
I'm sure they've got a good history, it wouldn't happen.
Well, and that's, you know, we'd spend a lot of time on our due diligence, and Jason's heavily in, involved with, with that work as well. But, you know, the advantage of that is we can really leverage the resources they have, where they literally have analysts there in these countries and can see what's going on. And then we can get the, you know, the advantage of that. And also, you know, we're pulling those assets together, so that gives us lower fee schedules as well. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, thanks for coming out for that presentation. Last time, James and Kate, we talked about alternative assets and we touched upon where is it going, where are you seeing with other clients? That is really good point, but, you know, just opening the, opening the game with the scenario thoughts on that.
Yeah, and, and we're doing a lot of work in that area. You know, I'd say you, you need to be careful stepping into that world. A lot of the alternative assets, when you start getting into the ones that maybe have the higher return expectations, might not have the liquidity that you want, where you can just sell it and get your, your money back. So I do think that we're finding more and more interesting things to look at. Right now, we don't have any recommendations to add anything. The First Eagle Global adds a little bit of that for us by having some gold exposure and even some kind of gold miner exposure at different times. And, and so that's one area where we get, I'd say pseudo, because that does give us, you know. Bitcoin's an amazing story, and it's done, you know, tremendously well, you know. You know, it, it will be interesting as we go through different cycles. You know, gold has a value, just an intrinsic value for being gold, and it's this much. And then the rest of that is the world has said that's kind of a reserve currency or a reserve asset. So, you know, Bitcoin has inherited and operated a lot like that, but I don't know if it's been fully tested through a lot of different cycles. It will be interesting to see, because that at the end of the day, has no intrinsic value, because it's not a thing. It's just, it's something's been created, which is amazing that someone came up with that and, and, and it's, it's really done remarkable things. But, you know, we haven't made a recommendation to invest in cryptocurrency yet, and that might change in the future. And we continue to do research, but we don't have anything to bring to the portfolio. You know, I'd like the idea of alternative assets. I think you'll see the big pools of money, you know, the hundred million, the billion-dollar endowments. the big pools of money, you know, the hundred million, the billion dollar endowments get into private equity and, uh, private credit and private real estate. And there are some advantages. You know, it's just when you're putting a million dollars or two million dollars into those assets, it, which, what you could possibly gain gets kind of leaked away with any additional fees or structural issues that exist there. So, you know, I think it's something that is kind of the highest on our list of things that I think in the future could add value and reduce risk in the portfolio. But as of today, we don't have anything that I think is a perfect fit for the situation. Hopefully I didn't say anything that contradicts Jason in any way, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's an evolved situation, so. Um, in terms of, uh, you mentioned the international, uh, stuff, well, it's quite a picture. Uh, are clients starting to pivot away from international or are they still?
No, because we've had, uh, and, and, and we, Jason might even shown some graphs at different times. You know, what we've had over the last few years is kind of this separation where, um, the valuation on a relative basis, you know, international has gotten cheaper and cheaper, cheaper on a relative basis. And you see it in just general stock market performance. The US has been on this really great run. And, you know, I, I think of that like a rubber band, you know, it's kind of gets stretched and stretched and stretched. They've gotten stretched pretty far. For any of you, you know, stat, statistics geeks out there, you know, we, we got somewhere between two or three standard deviations away from where we've been historically. So like, that means we're somewhere in the one to five percent world. You know, if you said, okay, where are we? One to a hundred, we're in the one to five percent world when we start getting two to three standard deviations away. And, and, and so, you know, if we were there, this international outperformance has brought us here. So I'd say we still have some confidence that that gap could close more and we, we, we still like that exposure. And, and, you know, I think international companies, I'd say, you know, broadly speaking, aren't run as well as we run companies in the US, aren't run as efficiently and just have some general issues. But when you have a good international company and you can buy it a lot cheaper, you know, you can have an amazing company, but if you pay too much for it, you're not going to have a good investment experience. And so that is where I think there's still room for that to run, even though we've seen this relative outperformance of international this year. That was a good question.
Yeah, just one last question. Uh, there's, there's expectations in our results. Uh, is there anything that could figure out that?
It seems like we're, I mean, there's lots of things that can do rail, but I mean, it does feel like we've got that on a pretty good track. You know, we've got kind of the government shutdown going on now. We've been through that before. I, I, I feel like it could be bumpy and you could see markets react, but I do think that will get resolved in the, you know, we're almost kind of getting numb to this. It's like, oh, wow, this has happened again, you know, where you go, you go a few back and you, you know, it felt a lot more stressful than it feels today. Uh, so I would put that in kind of the high confidence level that I, I think that's likely to happen. That's, you know, that's one of those things that you even had, though we've had this nice stock market run, you know, that really helps, that really helps. You know, I, I think of like, real estate's been soft. As, you know, in the last few years, the real estate business has been kind of hit hard ever since interest rates went up. You know, you get two more rate cuts, it starts to relieve some of that pressure. And, you know, you've had maybe not four sellers, but you've had people selling real estate at more reduced prices than they wanted. So, you know, those are areas where there may be some opportunity in the future because it's going to take some pressure off and, and people are going to be able to unload this. And then you, there may be some good opportunity there. So, you know, we'll have exposure in those areas, but that's one of the things that I think at the top of my mind is if we get that, it could provide some relief, but it does that for kind of all businesses because now all of a sudden debt isn't as costly and, you know, that, that project that was borderline is like, oh, well, we got a couple of rate cuts now. It, you know, it's kind of net present value positive. So, um, that's, that's stimulative. You know, I think we still got, you know, just the cost of, you know, we've had inflation that's been rough on people. I mean, you see it when you go to the grocery store, you see it in just everything that you buy. And, you know, the, the thing is, even if inflation, you know, tames a bit, you're still at these higher prices now and, and everybody feels that. And that affects, you know, consumer spending. So, you know, rate cuts takes, takes some pressure off of kind of a lot of areas of our economy, which is, is stimulative, which could offset maybe some other, other things that, that may be harnessing.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, great seeing everybody. And, uh, we'll get the paperwork out to you to get the P.
Thank you for going ready today.
You too.
Thanks.
I need my bag. All right. Bye, everyone.
Okay, uh, all right, give it back. Uh, let's see, it doesn't, uh, so, a part of staff issues.
Uh, yeah, my original report, we talked about the agenda already. If you have any questions. As of now, we don't have any additional session.
I was in here on Saturday, eight AM. All right.
I, yeah, just along with my budget there, uh, we're finishing up uh, different things from the, for the summer here. We're finishing up on our exit on, uh, using all the final material we have, um, just getting ready for winter time here. It's been a, probably it is to be pushed. Drive over here, we'll get a job. We want to get started over there. We just need to probably at this time, um, hit the, uh, right inventory off of the, uh, five homeowners over here to be able to get into the properties, um, which we already talked to. Um, all, we talked each one, everyone, they all pre-apply, just now we give them a sign. So we'll get that started. We finished the project out there on, uh, Westing Mar Road and the basins and pipe and everything. What part we have to start first before getting into this, follow to us and so. Um, any other thing I have, I just want to mention the council. I don't know, sort of, unless you don't know, but I'm going to be off for probably like six weeks, at least six weeks for, uh, gear replacements. And that's, uh, on the fifteenth, so. Um, so I don't know, I don't know how long I'll be out, but I'll be in contact with Tom. Tom Losco will be in charge. I'll be in contact with him every day. I'll still be doing this, you know, the building stuff and all that, though. All my calls and stuff, you know, across my, uh, through my, uh, website. That's a anybody needs to reach out to me for any reason, whatever, I mean, at any time, give them a call. There's, um, some, something you see as a problem or something you need addressed.
Keep back before it snows.
Don't hurt your knee on this.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Do you need any moral support while that's going on? I have two replacements.
Give you, give you a call if I need.
Um, we have a couple of applications that was on the hearing board this month. Uh, he has a request to port the utility trailer between the house and the, and the street on East Town Road and the other has said, uh, supposed to fill a shed in the front yard. Planning commission, uh, doesn't have any applications at this time. However, I am expecting to get an application for unconditional use for, from, I don't pay them the rescue farm, uh, because they're riding, I believe, like, totally naked. First thing in the bucket, probably going to add to it. That's, we're looking for that tomorrow.
Just for passion.
Yeah, just for more animals. Yeah, so that property sits kind of behind it, it's not, it isn't a street or anything. Be interesting to see how that goes.
Thank you. Um, you have my report. Basically, winding down, um, towards programming season, more getting to event down. Uh, we're registering Halloween, we're at two hundred already. Uh, we try to cap that one around three fifty, four hundred, somewhere in that range. Um, but everything's been already ordered for that. Dan is already on the website. We'll start registering that. I believe it's first Monday in November for residents. Uh, so that'll be available, um, part in the nap, just, like you said, that timing. Question.
I think that one might be up.
Yeah, there's only, only one that's active.
I was gonna say, I think Trace Paul is
done after it's a weird, some of them are, were signed at weird, I mean, baseball, the year round thing, obviously. But, yes, some were signed at weird times, even, we did find one with soccer, but again, it was we can't, we don't have a signed date on it. So we don't know if they are a year out, we don't know if they're a half year out, um, but they are wrapping up as well. But, yeah, every, all of them need redone at this point in time. Even, like I said, even baseball who probably has till June one, at, at this point, we're going to rerun mold to probably restart at the beginning of their seasons, the following year. Yeah, we, I did make a list, but we do have contract items and others.
Yeah, uh, my report, uh, A one park, the factors will finally install. We just might have work to do around those before they're operational. Whether with the, in the parks and I guess even for the golf course, question for, I guess, maps. So we have a lot of older equipment. The last couple of years, when we buy new equipment, we use the train in. They don't want the equipment. We have stuff that, that either aged out surplus that so is, is there a, is it all, is it all go to bid? Was there, is there a?
A threshold, two thousand dollars. We have policy in place, doesn't have to come back, there's a report after it. It's supposed to be sort of buy the lot, but if it makes sense, that's something, you know, we have to sell it all together. So otherwise, process, uh, equipment over two thousand gets approval first and then goes after. So we'd like that, that, we have some, like you could just post on webpage, uh, short circuit of the process. They're not spending advertising.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Okay. And we'll start getting to some of that old stuff. They're writing on the stage. So some of the stuff needs to be moved out and moved on. And then, um, uh, the, the Clover Hill, there was a triplex that we have, have approved, the council approved in March. It is here or it's at their facility, ready to be delivered, except there is a surcharge.
Yeah.
Added to it. Air surcharge, whatever word we want to put with it, for it to be delivered. But sometimes, so there's sixteen hundred and forty-eight dollars.
If we have to go, you have to read in two weeks. How did we approve it originally? Did it post our, or?
It is a on the, yeah, he's got it right.
We met, we've done it before, we had to cost a change, we amended, uh, something previously adopted. But, yeah.
That's a final, that's by all means, fifteen forty-eight.
Yes, but, yeah, and, and, and it seems, even though we, the order of March, it, it fluctuates depending on where the tariffs are going. So that's, that's how they were calling it a surcharge and it, it, it's moving all, you know, and they
and well, as we're tax events.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and they're out of the three companies, they're the only one doing that. So I've been trying to pivot away. Um, that way, uh, the golf course will be closed as of right now on Monday for airifying, whether it will squeeze Tuesday, it's on the range in taken hours. The race from Tuesday on, as long as we get every weekend without notable failures on Monday would be a blessing. So the force has closed Monday for that. Uh, but other than that, they forced it really well again. Obviously, the rain that we got last week helped tremendously. It, it, it's, uh, our time to go up to the grass, my name at the moment, it really jumped up. All right, any questions?
Thank you. Uh, you do have a report. Not many updates, any team names. Both the financing construction or waiting construction, um, siding for Clover Hill, the, the activity center. Wait materials, we, they're, they're soon here. And then we are moving along with design to the Rochester Road, um, or crossing there with the apartment application being that really, no other big update. Um, any questions, councils, do you have any more work on?
I have nothing to add to my report. Unless there's any questions.
We, is the MS four report was filed? Can we speak up there? No, yeah.
I know it's in the newsletter, but Wednesday pick up.
Well, I'm not sure if they've got a hand or there's, uh, Mondays for, I think, um, pardon, um,
the week before, or before, yeah, it's the last roots, I think, of October, and then I think it's, uh, we only do Halloween, the week before Halloween.
Make one skip center, yeah. Weeks until, uh, November.
Yeah.
It's on the Mondays.
Okay, so it's the two week, it starts the twentieth. Okay. Uh, it's not the twenty-seventh. Uh, it's every weekend in November, except for the week of Thanksgiving and then the first week of the seventh.
Uh, you have my report. Uh, two items on there that I want to highlight. Um, and one is uh, Teresa Scotty, um, the daughter of the first chief of police from, uh, Frank Park, uh, Chief Hotnich. She would like to make a donation to the, uh, police tournament to start a drone program. Um, she wants to pay for the drone, um, up to about ten thousand. She said she would even go over that. Um, and we started pricing drones, uh, looking at some different models. Um, and the cost to have two operators on, on a drone, which is not, not that expensive to have them licensed, uh, to operate them. Um, so I'd like to move forward with that. Um, and, uh, we have two officers, one of them who has, actually has a license to fly planes, actual planes. So I don't think I'll have a problem taking the test and passing that. Uh, and the other one, um, from his other department, he had done research on drones and he was gearing up to become a drone operator as well. So, um, so that to me is pretty exciting. Um, and, uh, uh, we, I look into legacy costs and et cetera. The average lifespan of drone is about five years or so. But, um, I think in Frank Park, we'll get a lot more time out of it than that. I don't, I don't know that we'll, it'll be as active as maybe some other communities. So I would imagine we get more time out of it than, than that. Um, the other topic is, uh, so we were getting complaints on Locust Road about, uh, So we were getting complaints on Locust Road about, uh, speeding, and I moved from speeding to weight restriction. Uh, it caused us to do a little bit of research, uh, not, I don't know if Kathy wants me to say her name, but she helped out greatly with this, uh, as well as Lieutenant Snyder. And we found out that Locust Road, um, as well as we have this in other parts of the community, um, we have no engineering study to support. Having a weight restriction on that road, uh, so we are not able to enforce that legally. Um, and similar to the, uh, stop signs over in Settlers Walk, as we mentioned before, um. So I didn't know going forward whether or not, uh. We wanted to start looking into, uh, engineering studies for certain roadways, um, and if in the future, when. We're having a plan built, if that can be a cost. On the developer of the plan to, and maybe that already does happen, I don't know, um, the cost on them to. Support whatever speed limits or stop signs in that community as well. Um, and then we kind of have a decision to make as far as, do we leave the, uh, signs as they are, as a deterrent? Um, and, uh, won't be able to legally enforce them, or do we have to take them down? So.
So there are signs on Locust now.
There is, uh, both ends of Locust Road have, uh. Signs only saying nine ton weight limit, and then. Uh, Lieutenant Snyder will be able to be a little bit more knowledgeable about this, and Zach has a knowledge, uh, just commenting about. Certain roads are already built to handle weight because of fuel tax, is, is that the way that works, um, and. Okay, uh. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not real familiar with all the background to that, so I'm not even sure that Locust Road was warrants. Having a nine ton restriction on it, so that, that is, uh, obviously an engineer study would have to, to show that or not, but.
So yeah, I was just looking at this for another client in the afternoon, uh, throw in. Yes, for, for any type of weight restriction, you need traffic and engineering study, the ordinance, the posting, everything else, it all goes along. If you don't have sort of one of the three, and you cite somebody, they're vision the vehicle code, that if you have to reimburse the costs. Driver that put through it, all sorts of bad stuff for doing it, so. Not enforcing is, is okay, uh, there are cases that say if you do the traffic and engineering study after you pass the ordinance, that's okay, that. Puppers it for future enforcement, so you don't have to like rescind the ordinance, do the study, and then pass it again. If the study comes back and says it's not more, maybe it's ten tons, nine some. But, uh, yeah, we would have to change the ordinance, uh, the, either remove it, if the. I guess we just take the signs down.
This one's one of the roofs, looking back on the tunnel and the turn back.
Oh, even that, well, so maybe. Pen dot that.
We checked, yeah, we spoke with Penn Dot, Kathy spoke with one, and we spoke with the other, and, yeah.
Look at that, stick with that, Ken, since we knew.
As all those.
We only have the sign, maybe the ordinance and not the studies. I thought you were saying that we did have.
You have all three, right?
Yeah.
That's one of the three, right?
Yeah, it's kind of, uh, various roads have different, so some of them are adopted. And we have an engineering, some of them, so it depends on where in the borough we're talking about, um, the only ones that Borough or Penn Dot has. Um, on file with engineering studies is Big Swick Creek to McGee Road. Um, and McGee Road, uh, from the high, of high township line to Springdale Lane. Those are the only ones with their own record of Penn Dot.
You're asking, what if nine tons? An eighteen liter?
We, we had the question, you had the question of whether we should. Think about taking the signs down, or leave them up, not be able to force that.
Right.
I think we had a similar circumstance, like on James, that's something that don't, don't use as a cut.
Yeah, it was unenforceable, the residents couldn't ask that to be a. They were hoping to use that as a deterrent, but yeah, it's unenforceable, um.
In John James, it's no.
Ah, yeah, no through free.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, okay, these two are using.
Yes, we had creative side, uh. Installing at some point, just, let's put these signs in, and that's what happens.
I think the mayor had a question, are we gonna leave the sign up, or?
Yes.
Well, I'm not taking tough people to discuss it anyway, to, um. One of the things we'd have up at Locust is the fact, because if the sign is there, and you can't enforce it, then they think we're not doing that job.
Correct.
Fair point. It says the Borough Coast blanket nine ton limit on all Borough roads, so there must be.
There, yeah, we have, we have other ones as well, yeah.
Yeah, but, how, how many of them are banned?
Right.
That's the thing.
Did it hurt too?
We did this, you know, as I said to the chief, I don't know if you heard, we have that no through street sign on James, just as a deterrent, and I think there are other signs like that throughout the borough.
Yeah, I, uh.
It's hard to say, but.
Well, the chief asked a question, so I just want to get it short out, so I think too, you need, you need to leave them up. Do people complain to us, I mean, are we able to say, it's not enforceable, but will deter the activity, is that?
Yeah, and to, to, uh, Luke's point, I, I agree, I, I think there are great deterrents, um. Uh, you know, and for the most part in the borough, we don't get a lot of complaints about this being an issue. Um, I will say that there will be, once I have to explain this to a resident on Locust Road about that situation. Is not going to be happy about that, uh, at all, um, but again, my leaving them there would deter people. Versus taking them away and letting.
Right.
Anything go on that road, so, um, yeah.
Well, this is not the first time Mr. Complain has come up with this in the business.
No, and, and his complaint, uh, can be, uh, somewhat erratic. Uh, and his behavior towards his complaints, um, sometimes very. Forginal, um, and then other times not so forgiveable, so.
I, I deal with him on the asphalt issues, he gives it in all directions.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, I think we all kind of, I think we all prefer to leave signs up, and I think so.
Thank you, that'd be my opinion.
Is that fine, we'll be able to explain from the, from the police department position that. We have signs, but we know we can't enforce it, but we're leaving the sign there.
Well, how often does that conversation even come up?
It's gonna happen with this.
Okay, but what about the other rest, like, is it like a standard thing, like, oh, you know, this truck came through, what are you gonna do about it, or?
The only, the only other time that I can really recall having conversations about signs that we can't enforce this Settlers Walk. Where, you know, people have complained about other residents in the community not stopping for the stop signs, and. I have to say, well, you know, they aren't pausing, you know, people expect you to stop, but then you don't. It causes a, a little bit of, uh, chaos, but they're not enforceable.
You still can't run the dust screens over it.
Yes, that, that was my point, too, yeah.
But, yes. Okay.
That's really the need to offer, right? Okay, thank you.
And we're good with the drone, is that, is everybody excited right now?
No, we've, we've had incidents, uh, with visiting people, uh, certainly, where we have had drones.
We, we have, had, have outside drones, canons come in, absolutely, yeah, and, I mean, it was highlighted in the news recently that. Um, juvenile, the, the little kid that went missing, who was nonverbal, and they found him via drone, if it wasn't for a drone. He was literally in the woods and, um, by himself, and, and he had no way to communicate that he was lost, and. They found him with a, with a drone, so it's, it can be a huge asset for us, without a doubt.
You get one that would have like heat seeking capability, so you could.
Yep.
Locate somebody just like that.
Yeah.
I don't even notice, is there AI cap, AI capabilities where it tries to rebuild things that it can't see all of, you know, that's like.
That's a great question, I, I don't know the answer to that, and I would not be surprised if, if it's not built in as future comes, I, I, yeah, would, would not be surprised.
Very generous of her.
Yes.
Very generous.
Yes, very, yes. Very much.
Is the, uh. Once you learn how to do it, and you just know it, or you have to have recurrent, something going on with flying them, or like?
Hours.
Yeah, the hours and training, um, I don't know, uh, there's updated training, but you can do most of that online. Um, there's a, a local company, uh, for a hundred dollars will, um, take the two officers through the training. Where there'll be licensed in, uh, by the FAA, so, um, yeah, it's, it'll be an ongoing thing, but. It won't have a lot of exit spots, I don't have to buy food for it, um, yeah. Batteries maybe, but, but, yeah, that's, that's pretty reasonable.
We're restored.
Oh, we'll, we'll find, yeah.
Do we have any ordinances right, ordinances right now that require the developers to pay for some kind of study for weights or roads?
I remember we have one for weights. But we've done this before, I mean, we haven't had a developer come through for acceptance, but we have had them. Please pay for the ordinance to adopt the, and that the. Traffic control, rather than weight limit ones, the, the traffic and engineering study is not so detailed. Police can do one, the roadmaster can do one, um, it's sometimes when we are adopting a no parking area, stop sign, we kind of get a. Short report that just says, yeah, it's a safety issue, and it's all you need to. Uh, yeah, these ones about, poor borings, what was it made of, uh, like after the fact, can be seen. The target amount of restriction should be.
I think Laura's warming up to, we may, we need to think about developers can confront the, the, uh. Weight bearing.
Atticism.
Yeah. I, I agree with her too, I think we should talk about that.
One question, doesn't I, are, we have a specification for pavement in all, I guess, I'm sure I'm likely to lead to that. Wouldn't, is it based on a ten dot number, or some sort of, is there any weight capacity in the design of the pavement that we require that?
I'd have to work with, my, my. Thoughts are, if, if I think of design, do not be a restricted weight. And continuous metal vehicle, uh, it's forty pounds or less. Um, the section is fixed, not, but then the, um, we, we've done these weight limit studies a lot, you asked us to do them. Sometimes you don't get the result that you want, and you pour them, and there's this much asphalt there, and you came with a straight face, there's a road, can't take it. Um, so. It, you, we have some discretion in that, um, in, in our standard detail for how we go to the road. But I also don't think we want to skinny the road up, say, build less here so we can put a weight, and that's how you'd be planning for, you know, having maintained, so. If a planned road, we wanted to build, so it's not worth it.
Is nine tons kind of low, sounds like?
I mean, not, not for every day traffic car, or whatever, but for, uh, delivery, bigger truck.
I mean, for, not for our vehicle, I don't mean as a low for a vehicle, I mean below those roads.
For a weight.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it's a relatively low, low weight. By the, the vehicle code, if there is not, I think, is, in Tom, it's an eighty thousand pounds, forty tons is, you know, the standard. Um, and then you would reduce from that to be whatever.
Yeah.
Um, if we want to look at restricting trucks and neighbors, that kind of thing, we often look at, um. In addition to just weight limit studies, looking at geometric factors, are there. Can a truck practically make a turn, is it, you know, dimensionally big enough to get through it, it's not gonna cause damage? Um, you know, that still requires a look, conserve, eh, and auto turn and all that, that's the other way to look at it. I'm not familiar with this road, unfortunately, if trucks are using it as a cut group to residential area to get there with the. Sure, trucks be visiting you off through.
Plus, you've got the local traffic exceptions, uh, and if you do need to use it. They can do an excess hauling agreement or a bond, it's only twelve thousand five hundred for linear, not help, pay bros. Uh, so it just puts them on the hook, they get issued a permit, that if they, you have to do a free inspection, and you can post inspection, if they do damage. As they conceded the weight limit, they are supposed to repair it. Well, after the bond, they don't, but that's a big administrative. Issue, so if you don't want buck banned trucks, like, you know, no truck, or exceptions, that's what he's worried about. Even if you have it, you force it, you know.
It sounds like we'd be solving a problem that doesn't fit.
Yeah, I don't. Two that are listed, at least on the, the ordinance right now. Had some heavy truck traffic that would rest, sometimes other municipalities or something, not. Not to the level of some of the more rural townships, where all they really have to do is watch their roads, and. There are all these tiny little thirty-three. Falling off of a flip side type of conditions, Russian detective, outbuilt, but.
You do have McDevitt, where there's a, yeah, time, we.
Yeah, that one.
For a small section.
And, and that's in the ordinance.
Is it?
Yeah, George, just checking. Be sometimes, man.
I'm assuming Public Works does not come up there for, uh.
I think David would teach them.
Just with that one lane, pitch, bridge there.
They want to take the horse about the other direction.
Well, we, our trucks don't run that, I mean, we, we, we want them to come down the, down the other way. You know, our truck, because it's, we had actually an accident, we were wanting to follow back there, and it's, uh, a little bit of a stink over that. So we kind of make sure, and try to keep our trucks off of that little.
For, for the record, the borough is not your fault.
Maybe ten, something for everybody, but anything seems to say, if not.
Tell Andy, can you just be, Zach's message is pretty much.
So, uh, yeah, I guess everyone can leave, except with that, yeah, the, the button, thanks.
I wouldn't talk about the, feel the sign there, is that sign?
Yeah, same sign start.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Is that one on the table?
It's true.
See you later, for sure. Meeting on Saturday, so, uh.
Yes, I, thank you for seeing me tonight. Well, it's funny, because we always do a Halloween camping trip, and for last five years. Maybe six, it's always been on the second week, and. Couple of years ago, we switched the budget meeting to the second weekend in October, this is the first year I switched it to make sure I would be here, and we changed it to the first week. So, I do appreciate, um, it could have certainly come down Saturday, but I will. Feel a lot better about doing it tonight, we'll put it that way. So you have my preliminary budget, uh, is there. I don't know how you have it, is there a certain page you want to start with?
Well, we, we have Excel.
Yeah, we have it in order.
So the three sixty-seven, first of all.
Uh, four, five, two, to the rotation page.
Yeah, four, five, two. The number.
Okay.
This page one to.
I find those numbers really.
Sorry, it's a.
Oh.
No, no. So four fifty-two is a lot of the salary, pension, health insurance, all that stuff, um, so this is going to be a lot of what, uh, Reach is gonna put in. Uh, there is, the only bigger increase by a couple of thousand is the meeting conference training line. Um, that one's up because our national conference is in Philadelphia next year for Parks and Rec. Uh, so I am considering doing that one, um. We are also going to be applying for, uh, PRPS, which is our Pennsylvania one, for Acorn Park for an award as well. But may end up stopping by both of them, uh, but that's, that one is a little bit increased. And then we also increased the general expense side, just to have money there for playground soft goods. Um, so handles.
Um, so handles, buckles, chains, the stuff like that, we know we are. Increasingly getting older in our playgrounds and the, like I know Old Orchard needs. Every handle in that place needs replaced drums, things like that, uh, we're also starting to look at, uh, trash can. In all the parks and replacing those and they are ridiculously expensive.
Like six hundred dollars a pop.
Like eight, eight hundred a pop. Uh, we are looking at the circular brown recycle ones. We can get the plastic coated metal ones, they're not as nice, they are like six fifty. Um, yeah, the, to get liners and the lids that, uh, Jim wants. Which are the ones with flaps on them, which prevent rain from getting them, which is obviously. causes a lot less mess when we have cold math, uh, if they're not loaded down with water, so yeah, those are all things that we're. Slowly going to replace, like Zach said, we have a lot of trash and recycling bins in our parks. Uh, and they need to be there, so to kind of get us all looking correct and looking right. Because at this point in time, uh, we probably have ten different types of cans out there in the parks. And I mean, Blueberry alone probably has five, six different types of can around the park.
Are you, just, just, you know, one or two boxes, do you do that, or incrementally, how did that?
Yeah, so we, um, this year, we are going to do Acorn, obviously, to get us ticked off. But we don't have anything there and we're finishing up that grant anyway, so Acorn and the golf course, we're going to get done now. Um, and then with, hopefully we'll, we'll have enough left in this that, uh, Lindbrook should get covered next year. Um, if we still have, you know, obviously cost wise, maybe we may even be able to get Old Orchard for next year as well. Uh, but it's a matter of, like I said, Lindbrook, you're probably looking at ten cans alone. Uh, Old Orchard's a little better, you probably have three, uh, maybe three trash and one recycled, um. It, it's just, Old Orchard and Lindbrook, we don't have dumpsters at. So we have to make sure we have enough cans there to cover a weekend of activities. Um, we do try to get the parks grew up there on Saturday and Sundays just to go through them. But yeah, without having a, a large dumpster on site, Lindbrook used to have a large dumpster and it ended up just being a dumping ground for the community. Uh, but it was nothing but mattresses and TVs all the time, so we did remove those a few years ago, um. To alleviate that issue.
Don't we have cameras there? And like the range of the cameras?
We, we have cameras on those, our, our industrials will still be bad, still, I mean, it's not that.
People are still, there's a catch like.
Um, the, the ALPR is the front line of the entire department. Anybody who's going out and you catch them, it could be as when do they go in and out, and we're just going to sit there and watch hours of videos trying to figure it out, yeah, we'd have to find them. Like, I need like a one hour window.
What's coming with the shortfall, it's like between the actuals and the budget, is there something that's causing the overruns that you can help identify? I'm just looking at the, I mean, it's come down, so yeah, so we're, so I'm just looking at page one, one fifty four of two seventy and the. In our packet and I'm looking, looking at the top, and just for like twenty, so twenty twenty four, that. The budget was two thirty-five, the actuals were three thirty, that's, that's, that's quite a bit different. And then twenty twenty five, it looks like you're projecting sixty-five thousand shortfall, what's, what's causing that to you now?
Uh, yeah, school calendar, um, and it is because we can't set our camps. Our camp schedule can't be set until we know the school calendar, so back. It used to be eight weeks of camp, four eco camps, four sports camps, in the last couple of years, we snuck in five sports camps. Um, last year we did four ecos, but our, two years ago, we did four ecos, five sports, last year was five sports, five ecos. We are, this budget is set as four and four, obviously, if we have. Eight week, eight true weeks of summer, we will, or ten true weeks of summer, we will run ten and ten again. Um, now I know school gets out a week later this year. And really, they've been pulling us back into school earlier and earlier, so that's, it's until they. Give me a schedule, which we will have before final, um. Before the final budget, I can't count on us getting ten weeks of camp again. Um, so this is runoff of eight weeks of camp, which is your, your sixty thousand deficit you see in three six seven two hundred. Um, it's also why the expenses for recreation programming, so that's the four, five, two, three hundred. Is thirty thousand down from last year.
But, but the, on the patient, Brian Simon, three and five with three fifty four, you're, it's not the sure, running deficit, you actually collected almost. Fifty thousand more than you was projecting, right?
Because again, the, when we set the, we got the extra camps in this year.
But it's a free. It's not a deficit, I think that's.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused.
Yes, so it's actually, yeah, forty-nine thousand dollars better.
Yeah, because the original one was set with fewer weeks of camp. Yeah.
So, so but you are predicting sixty thousand dollars less. Uh, again, looking at one fifty four, it's in the red, what is that, what is that?
You're asking sixty thousand dollars less this year.
Sixty thousand dollars less if we can run those two weeks of camp.
Okay, oh, I see.
You're expecting sixty thousand dollars less of income for sure, okay, I'm with you now.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I like the word requested, because it makes it sound like. It's an expense, I'd probably call that estimated or forecast.
It looks like, yeah, forecast.
But I've got it now.
I think that's what's.
Yeah, everything in three, six, seven is income.
Right.
Uh, four fifty two is expense account for recreation.
Maybe make that estimated.
I just don't know if you have any control on that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it just feels like it's, it's really just projected.
Chart, yeah.
It's really twenty twenty six projected income.
Correct, for, for, for the three six seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going back up to the page above that, um, four five two, telephone monthly charges, what's the? What's the difference here, hold on, the three actual. And twenty-four actual zero. Twenty-five actual is zero up to this point, right? What projected zero or six hundred, what's the, the up and down through the years of that?
I don't have an answer, I don't know, we get our bills and then someone codes them to each part. So that is a finance. Yeah, that's cell phone.
Oh, but that's weird.
Yeah, it might have just got put to a different, it's probably one telephone line.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, because that's my work, cell phone, you know, that should be coming out of that.
And then they got two subscriptions, they went forty-three to five hundred to one hundred. And now back to five hundred, is that explainable? That seems like a difference since.
So something wasn't put into that, that is dues is our professional groups, so PRPS. That, which is the Pennsylvania group, there's a regional group I belong to, and that'll also be the national group, um. That is actually coming right now, we just got built for the national membership, which is like one's P D for the year, I believe it is. Uh, but yeah, there, the PA one and the, the regional group are both not in there, I want to say they're probably two twenty-five. So two twenty-five, one eighty, they'll be at like four and five, four twenty-five by the end of the year.
About Laura, did you see this one, the twenty twenty-three for one forty, four fifty-two, three oh one. Actual sixty-nine oh seven, budget fifty-five, that's twenty twenty-three actuals and the budget's fifty-five. And then actuals for twenty twenty-four zero, what's the explanation for that?
That is the, because we, it's a new code now, that goes. That got changed from four fifty-two's line to that four fifty-seven line.
Just moved.
Two tables down.
Yeah, yeah, so we, because of the, the fee codes now. Festival goes into its own, um, veterans events is its own code and community events is its own code now.
So if I look at the, the red for increase, decrease twenty-five, it says ten thousand two hundred. Is that a decrease in income or a decrease in expense?
Decrease in expense for.
It's a savings.
Yes, yeah, but again, that will be, have to be adjusted, obviously, we are going to run ten weeks of camp. We're also going to have the expense side of those ten weeks camp going.
Okay, and then on, uh, festival, recreation program, oh wait, no, sorry, recreation programming, right above that, so. We're, you're requesting this year actually less than, I thought you're requesting for twenty twenty-six less than twenty twenty-five. Is that correct?
Sorry, give me a, a line number.
Uh, three hundred. Four five two, three hundred.
Yes, because that is the expense line for program, which is. So that is the revenue line, that's your three six seven two hundred, yeah.
So it's, it's the corresponding to, the correct difference on both is the two weeks program.
Correct, yeah, the expense on, yeah, but if we, you know, we should be. In a perfect world, we will again be at the three seventy, um. We really should be at three seventy again for projected, but I can't.
Right.
Put that in until I know I'm going to run those camps.
Okay, and this, the recreation programming is just camp?
It is anything we do that is a program, so anything we take money and have expense for, so. It is camp, it is line dance, it is cheerleading, it is soccer shops, it is basically any community. Paid for, we have an instructor for it type of thing. No leads, not, no associations, no leagues, no field, um, that is something we changed around a little bit. Um, in the three six seven line, we shifted some things around, it is now, um. It's been a mix mash through the years, but basically now, three, six, seven, four, five, two is only activity center round. So that is only fees taken in at, for someone in the activity center. Um, then the three, six, seven, four, five, one, the one above that, I believe is the one that turns into fields. Which is association fees and res of the fields themselves. Uh, and then the one above that will be four fifty, which is going to be shelters. So that is all of our outside shelters, so Maple Grove, gazebo, Old Orchard, that's where all that money's going.
Alright, so now here's the.
I mean, that's that money coming from, not going to, okay?
Coming in from.
When I took all the money, put in the pot that we got, and all the money we spent. What's the outcome, do we make money, do we lose money?
In recreation, we do very well.
Okay, I can't see, maybe I'm, like, is there like a final, like?
Uh, I mean, off the top of my head, I want to say we clear like usually seventy to eighty.
Is that what, so on the last page, there's a eighty-eight fifty, now that's just that, that.
That's, yeah, that's just.
So as of right now, we're, revenue we're sitting about four. We have, go back to the budget.
I think my headline is, I'd love to see, this is how much Kingman's, how much what else, just even if it's just a bottom line.
So as of right now, we're, we're sixty thousand in the, I want to pause it.
Okay. So festival and park, last, then twenty twenty-five, cost total forty-nine thousand dollars. And you're expecting it to cost this seventy thousand dollars this time, right?
Unfortunately, um.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure.
Yeah. Well, we locked in fireworks for multiple year contract, which. We fully expect to probably get hit with a twenty percent. Um, we're exploring other options, but I'm sure also nobody wants to lose the fireworks.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, you know, we do have to again investigate whether we run transportation. Because last year, we were full, what do you think, six thirty?
It was the transportation use.
We didn't use it those years, right, we didn't offer.
The year, the, two years ago, it's two years ago?
We offered it during, um, the bicentennial.
Isn't there safety reasons for offering that? Or just shut down when you're done, when there's no more space, you just turn people away and they can't.
We had two sites, we had the, the elementary school in, we didn't really use the Y, but I think we did.
The, so elementary school we got heavily, the. Uh, that would, that would be the look, is to only use that one site.
Yeah.
But buses are, I think they hit us for two thousand a bus.
That sounds right.
Oh, yes. Because they run for five hours, so you.
Three maybe?
We, that year, the bicentennial year, we ran five. Now, could we get away with two, probably, because of just going to Franklin, yes, I, I wouldn't expect to use more than two. Uh, if we do the, uh, transportation.
Yeah, but even paying for that stuff, we still didn't end up in the hole for that, for the year for the refrigeration. We're just providing services for our residents and whoever else wants to.
Yeah, and this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, it sounds fine, what are we going to do to provide service as long as we're not taking money out of the tax books?
Yes, because, no, we, this is a very self-sustaining model we currently have going, um. Like you said, we. The associations have been good about improving their fields, which, you know, in a. If we were to actually sit down and say, what fee should we have collected for field fees, it'd probably be sixty thousand. But we as a borough don't want to take the expense of putting up lighting fixtures and putting in full turf fields. It's not, it's a community improvement, it's an association improvement, but at the end of the day, we as a borough. It doesn't really benefit us, because we're not running festival off of a baseball field. Um, it's, you know, there's no general rea- reason for us to do it as a borough, to put that expense on the.
Right, if we were running.
Correct.
So they just absorb whatever it is that they, all their improvements that they on everything, all the events, they just absorbed that as a cost.
I don't know how we deal with grants and things like that now in the contract, but I think we need to fix that when we get to this. Um, whether they get grants or if they're giving a dollar for dollar offset.
We, I mean, the most reasonable was baseball field for lighting project, and yes, we did, we credited them full. For the entire project.
Pirates put in, what, forty grand or something like that?
If I remember correctly, on that grant, it was originally thirty-five, fifty, fifty, um, it ended up. What we agreed was forty-two and ended up being like fifty-four, so it was all a sudden up, I thought the Pirates were fifty percent. Or maybe they covered up to thirty-five, and then the association paid in the rest because they added an extra light tower. To get better coverage up on that field.
I mean, it's fair, but may, but maybe not, I just think something we'll have to think about in there.
Um.
The association's.
I, and I think that's what we need to look at with the new contracts is who got the grant, did.
Yeah.
You know, baseball went out and did their own work, wrote their own grant, so we should have some calculation to. Give them credit for doing the work to do it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we end up writing a grant for turf or something for the stadium field, then, yeah, I wouldn't. Feel as though we now owe a grant and the full amount of whatever that project is that. You know, football, lacrosse, soccer ends up would put into something like that. Yeah, I, I think it, I think it would have to be looked at as who was the recipient and writer of the actual grant itself, whether it's the borough. Or the association that we're dealing with.
Oh, big numbers if you grasp, uh, uh, if you're looking at just, uh, internal budget for, uh. Tax department and revenue in, you're net positive forty thousand. Tax department and revenue in, you're net positive forty thousand, if you add in the community events, you're negative forty eight thousand.
Oh, okay.
If you add festival, the community events.
We, no, we, yes, we.
Doing the community events.
Are we anticipating doing anything over a vault for year two fifty? You know, like for festival or things we're doing in that year two fifty.
You know, maybe we shouldn't be going into whole forty eight thousand bucks and. I, I don't know what the solution is, but we should think about that. As we're trying to balance the.
It takes into account, into account sponsorships and everything like that, but. Uh, not.
Yeah, the sponsorship money is in the golf alley.
Yeah, almost fifty thousand.
Because of, of, we run, there's all the, well, but I mean, but the community events we run are all free.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's how they're supposed to be.
Yeah, we used to charge a lot, well, not.
Yeah, we used to do wristbands for rides, we used to.
Just like internal operation for net positive, right, by offering the additional of community events.
You talking about? Just.
Based on what we're looking at right here.
So community events are.
Festival park, veterans bands, community bands.
Halloween and Santa and the.
Okay.
Well, so do we need to be more aggressive about finding sponsors if that's? We talked about it before for a number of years.
We did it, we, we did it for the bicentennial, right?
Yeah, we had somebody.
And how did that go? The, did, did we want to?
Enough to offset River City, didn't he?
He got enough, I think he was trying for. Call it seventy five, I think he ended with like forty. Um, so, you know, he definitely found money. Um. Uh, Tom.
So Tom Rooney actually, I mentioned for me. Sometimes we get together, we did that lecture on something, but. And I think if we ask him, he would uh. Give a few uh, willing to, give us my ideas.
We, I think we should be more aggressive about getting sponsors if we're going in the hole on the community stuff, cause you wanna keep doing the community stuff, but it also makes sense to have sponsors for.
Then just checking, are there any women's sponsored sponsors? That we don't allow or.
Well, if you like, maybe we'll approach him, I'll be happy to.
That, that is, yeah, that discussion point is why we. You have the sign restrictions on the sign and others.
Yeah.
So any company generally then? Got any?
Mm-hmm, I mean, and our real issue is we don't have a lot of commercial.
Yeah.
That's.
We do have a lot of business.
We do have business centers that live in the.
And also, what is, what do they get? Like, do they have a sign?
We can set up anything you want, correct.
Yeah, usually like the once was true.
Synchronized drone. Correct, yeah, bicentennial, we made announcements with them, we had banners for our top end ones. Uh, cause I think we had like three major sponsors, um, so we had like three banners across the stage. Uh. And we can pull all that stuff that uh. Tom had. We had put out to the community for the bicentennial, obviously the bigger attraction of the bicentennial was. You know, we had more attractions, we had a bigger band, things like that. Uh. But yeah, at the, and we can do it where we are looking to do. Across multiple events. Whether, you know, with veterans, with Easter, with Halloween, all that stuff. Um, where they get recognition across multiple events, which is better than a single four hour.
Yeah, that's repetitive.
I think you leave golf outing alone, yeah, that's.
You don't want it to fall apart because you, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, that, that.
Yeah, and that's honestly where we do run into things and, you know, like. Lauren, the mayor, we're just looking at for the senior life sponsorships. It's again, we gotta make sure we don't. Double, triple, quadruple.
What they're gonna go is, I'm willing to give this much, I'm gonna spread it out over all these different asks and then you, yeah. That's difficult, but. I don't know if we wanna spend money on a two hundred fifty celebration, that's kind of unusual anyway, I'm not certain. I can probably save. And still have a nice festival.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't think. I haven't, and I'll, I'll ask the question next time we're uh. The regional group, if anybody else is looking to do bigger, um, I will tell you that we, you. Our community probably does the biggest annual community event.
Yeah.
Um, as far as. Expense wise and what attractions we bring in, um, are generally larger than what the other places do. Uh, McCandless did change hers this year. Um, I have talked to her to see what kind of budget they were working with, so they did a little more. Um, than they had been doing, but still, I don't think um. As far as attractiveness to come to it, ours is.
Yeah, ours is well attended and attracts people way outside the community show up.
Yeah, then people don't like primary.
Yeah.
Uh, McCandless, well, not. They did the soccer fields behind, they did the baseball fields this year and their parking lot.
They had, I know they had in our elementary choir, that chorus thing, which is relatively budget friendly, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, the cars will show up.
Though. They started at one o'clock though, this year. Yes, theirs was very. I think long, uh, I'll be honest. Already starting at four o'clock, I can tell you I am done by the time fireworks come around. Uh, but they're starting at one o'clock this year, uh, which, you know, obviously if you wanna keep the stage. Going the whole time, yes, you need to.
Right.
Mix in dance companies and choirs and, you know, some more budget friendly things.
No, I'm sure they were not the headliners, I didn't go, I just heard.
Strolling strings. They'll show up.
Yeah, we generally do four. What we call our stage guys.
Okay.
Um. Most of them are reasonable, like under five hundred. Um, and then the headliner, obviously more, um, but you're also paying for seven piece band and everything else. Um.
You know, it could be something really simple too, just to show that we are thinking. About year two fifty, maybe. Having more little flags around or this, this is a sign, it's all ready to. And it doesn't have to be a big, major production.
Right.
But it would be nice to show patriots and stuff.
To acknowledge it, we can put a banner up.
Yes.
Yeah, that's relatively expensive.
Nature flag round.
Just to show patriotism, just to show patriotism from the flags, like, no, just like we do at our house, we put flags, but, you know, um.
The food trucks pay to get there, to be there, right?
No, we don't charge food trucks because we don't. Do minimums.
Yeah, right.
Uh, and that, that's the trade off, you know, they come, they don't have to pay because if it rains. They're on a Saturday in June, um, which is thousands of dollars guaranteed if they're doing a grad party or something of that nature. You know, they're taking a chance as much as we do of weathered. Um, and weather has been. June around here has a bling. Even though in general, when you do like the big festivals and stuff, it's. Minimum, it's a hundred dollars generally that they're gonna charge to show up.
It's just a, the spot, yeah.
What do we, uh? For national anthems, when do we get to do that? Last year.
Uh, festival singing. We don't do a national anthem at festival.
Well, that might be something you wanna do, uh, through, through two fifty. And actually, actually, I'm very, I'm very.
Go back to the school, you can already do it, just go back. You could have a school program and they would be ecstatic.
That's a great idea.
Well, we do build in bricks. Through, you know, generally our acts are forty five minutes and then we have just a fifteen minute changeover and stuff, um, and so we can. Bring in a small group to be on the front stage or the back stage, whatever it needs to be or in the grass.
If you get to the coordinator, they would be ecstatic. Exactly, is there anything else budget, will it, you spend it over, when we come at the same time?
No, but then, really, any questions you have?
Do we have any questions for Zach? This is out here Saturday.
Good. That's it.
Alright.
Good job with the budget. Yes, thank you, as I said, if there's, as I know, like. Obviously, we won't adopt this, I will adjust. That revenue and expense out of recreational programming as soon as I know how many weeks I have, you know, uh, into camp. And I don't wanna promise you money that isn't gonna be there at the end of the day, but. Thank you.
Have fun on your camping trip.
Thank you.
Hope you don't get rain.
It, I think this is the first time it's actually. Drying on a weekend in probably five years and honestly.
Thank you. If we do get to do the. The five weeks, we'll be net positive. Uh. Fifty thousand dollars. Forty eight. Excellent.
Let me get out of this hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, um. Plus, I've got kinda touched on already, Montgomery Road, the redesign has been applied to the contractor, we wanted bid, we're waiting for updated pricing. Uh, Justin believes that the price is most likely to be between twenty and thirty thousand dollars more than the original price. Uh, once we have those figures, we approve them, uh, it'll go to the cog and then the county try to amend our grant. Um.
Theme here.
Yeah, uh, the DCNR, uh, Conferex Open Parks, uh, plan, um, a bunch of. Serial submitted to the DCNR for approval, I got the approval today, I was starting on the draft, uh. RFP here, uh, hopefully beginning next week, uh, and then should have something here. Hoping in November to uh start advertising for contractors. Um, for those of you that couldn't attend the seventy nine uh. Improvement meeting put on by Penda, I have a, a rough summary of some of the impacts. That we'll see uh for the community, we get a Friday update by Penda on every week, we've been posting that uh. Pretty aggressively to make sure communities aware of the impacts, uh, one of the bigger ones, there'll be two overnight closures. Of Nicholson, uh, at some point during the project where they'll reroute people down western bay in Rochester. Uh, so it'll be a, a pretty big mess for two nights. The other big one was.
Uh, lead time will happen on that, I know they said like some, they're not sure when, they're kind of like spring probably.
I, I believe that they'll be posting it, the word's out to make residents aware. But the way it's been, we've been receiving it, Friday, we can update what's happened on Monday. Uh, we get it Friday at like three in the afternoon and Donna gets it up special game.
The other, the other big one was, uh, one lane on nine, ten for seventy days.
Yeah.
Um.
You would have messed up, yeah.
In a turning lane. For seventy days.
And that's gonna drive a bunch of traffic up the other, the other way, right? People are gonna go down Brant School Road and then turn and uh head up to try and cross.
Is it on the bridge itself?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's basically between the. I'm trying to figure out the Lakers.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going.
Uh, and then also we saw the Penda about the preemptive devices that uh Department of Government has requested. Um, Penda planned to remove what we have currently and reinstall it, it doesn't work, it's not gonna be an option.
That was a good cooperate.
Yeah, well, I said, we're gonna replace it, they go, yeah, yeah, we'll replace it, I was like, oh, great, this is gonna be easy. Non, non purchase new, uh, so their engineers are gonna look at what technology works best for the new equipments. Uh, they'll install it, we'll likely get an. It's kinda as if we want his book, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think it'll be great for community, uh, LSA, that's not due till the November thirtieth.
Is there any, are they gonna do the same type of device that we have now? Do we have any?
Requested the type I wanted and I told.
Okay, good.
What we want.
Oh, that's better, it's also the cheapest of all, so that's gonna be easy for them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the Nicholson, right, that, that's the entire. So.
I don't know where they're shutting it down, but you won't be able to come walk there.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, this is over a period of two years, so it's not gonna be a time soon, but when that happens, it'll just be a nice.
Just move.
They're gonna work with police departments to help with traffic, uh, but they'll be paying all the other times, so we won't have to worry. Um.
There you go.
Uh, Acorn Park, obviously the bathroom's in, uh, we're working with LSSC, uh, we need to do electrical hookups, uh, extend the sidewalks and then start planting. Uh, MS four report has been submitted, uh, and we paid our five hundred dollar fee as well for that, um. That is what it is, uh. They, based on our last audit, uh, they want us to expand our education program, not reprogram, they wanna try to work with the uh, EAC. Do some sort of MS four related event once a year, whether that be string cleanup or uh. Some kind of bumper playing thing, something to uh.
People are gonna wanna see that, is that like a punishment for them?
But I, I need, need to show current network action being taken based on education, which is a part of the, the application.
Uh, jumping back over to Acorn, is Acorn open, like, can I go there?
I mean, you can go there and there's, nothing's closed.
Like, can I walk on the trails if anyone calling the police on me?
Can, but we are not open. Yeah, swings in the park aren't installed.
And what about the pop trap?
It's open, people have been. Officially has not opened it, but it's public space. Um, Burntown, last final update, they're gonna donate three more signs to us to put them on every entrance of all our parks. Um, Reese Run, the uh, Lacoste Court. Um, are continuing to push for some sort of resolution, uh, now that we opened the door, uh, on Rochester Road. Um, they are demanding that we take action, uh, I'm trying to mitigate some of the things that they want short term. They want crosswalk, they want sidewalks, they want connectivity to uh, Old Orchard based on the comp plan that we did. And they're claiming that we're not following.
Maybe who?
Uh, the, the same, who we met with.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, but uh, I'm trying to. We've cut down trees already and I'm trying to work with Penda to see if I can braid a little bit of the hillside, but. Not my right of way, uh, in order to make it a little bit safer, uh, but no promises for sidewalks or crosswalks have been made or will be made until council makes that decision. And I've heard, I've heard from neighbors already on that street behind.
Yeah.
Very thankful.
Yeah.
Oh, good. I thought you were gonna say they're mad if they're.
Yeah, the residents are lying with me removing the trees, I know one of the residents does not want sidewalks, does not want. People coming through his yard, so if I come to him and say, hey, I wanna dig out your hillside so people will walk through the grass, I don't think it's gonna fly, uh. But it's Penda right away, so if I get Penda's approval in the right way, I'll know that I need his assistance, but uh, I'm still waiting for the. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but it's much, I mean, a lot of size is much better, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but we're with that and then Oak Leaf, uh. Very Keith, uh, uh, this check eye, is that right? The HOA and property owners at Oak Leaf, um, they're looking for a creative solution that doesn't require them to regret their stuff. You know, uh, and we're gonna talk about that here shortly.
Yeah. Where we go for three solutions without tree?
Yeah. Admin, we're requesting the closure of the offices the twenty sixth, uh, Christmas is on a third day, so the twenty sixth is the day after Friday. Um, Stavensville will take PTO days, uh, in order to, to obtain their pay and then just close the office with council permitting.
They're gonna ask the same thing in following the week, if New Year's, it would be.
Um, well, that has not been discussed. On the waking of time. Yeah, that's.
No, I'll be here cause we have a reorganization meeting in the offices.
I'll be here, Tom. I did be here, Tom. Uh, just, I fell through, that's it.
If you're gonna be closing twenty-fourth or New York closing at halftime, yeah. It started to put names ago. My day was.
Yeah.
Say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, yeah. So, I would like to have everyone be, some sort of final resolution when council wants to do for Oakleaf. Uh, and then I will make sure that happens, uh. But after visiting the site, um, things we found, uh, there's water and electric that run underneath all that, neither of which have asked them to remove it. They told them they'll kind of leave it, but if there's a problem, they'll dig out what they need to dig out and fix their stuff and that'll be that. Uh, there's no promises to fix anything.
After it's dug out.
After it's dug out, it'd be the H O A's responsibility to repair it. Um. The trees currently are trimmed back, nothing's overhanging any of the roadways, the sign is visible, uh, there's no line of sight issues with the, with the retaining wall or with any issue that would affect our operation, public safety operation for our residents. Um, so I kind of gave two options, it depends on how you guys wanna look at it. Uh, number one, enforce our ordinance and enforce what we have on the books. Uh, we enforce right of ways all the time, uh, if we start taking special exceptions to specific scenarios that don't have negative impact. Then you would have to start taking the same exceptions for other properties, which limited what our code enforcement can do. Um, or make them sign a, uh, memorandum of understanding with the layout of what we want and allow them to, uh, keep the trees and wall in place, so possible, you know, there are trees hanging out of the roadway, ensure clear visibility all times to the speed sign intersection and accept any financial responsibility, tree root damage to the roadway due to, uh.
And post upon.
I'm okay with them, with the M O U, I still think they should. I, I still think they shouldn't allow people. I think the wall is less the concern than the trees, because the wall is not gonna damage our roadway. Those trees, if they keep getting bigger, eventually the roots are gonna spread. When they spread, it might start dislodging curb and sidewalk, and there's lots of sidewalk, there were curb and roadway, that's my concern is that.
Like trees in general, I think we've had enough fact finding, but those trees are not going to do that, but trees in general, I would agree with you.
Hey, look, I couldn't hear you, Dana. Uh, I mean, I think the trees are fine. I don't, I don't think we should allow people to do things.
Though, again, take the wall down.
But Zach, Zach also has a good point, the wall's not going to be damaging. Um, the tree roots could, um, that's more important as well, though, that those are shallow roots and we, we think they'll be okay there.
And they're also up on a mound.
A huge mound.
I would tend to agree with you about the wall just because.
You know, from the beginning, we told them. Wall's not a.
Right.
Did they ever put permits or anything to the law?
No. I think this has been built like thirty, forty, fifty years ago, right, so.
The original trees, the wall was.
Well, the wall was brand, the wall was built, the wall years under, there's a. Ten years ago.
And when they redesigned the trees, they built the wall.
Yeah, yeah. Because why not? Now, the, the other side, the wall on the other side is, it's on the plains at the top. I bet, this little meat hole they put in some point.
One other thing I'd like to imagine on the tree, I understand the passion around trees on both sides. Uh, this issue really came to a head more in the winter, because the branches have been weighed down by snow, you know, in the land. But where they are now, I don't know what they're gonna look like, we get the two edges of the snow.
But the memorandum of understanding is gonna require them.
Right, at all times.
At all, um, right, so, so if you see that, it's like that's, there's no question, because they're gonna, they'll sign something saying, we're gonna fix it or you're gonna fix it, charge us whatever the, whatever.
I think we also, if we're thinking about a memorandum of, of M O U, we should think about, as the trees die, they cannot be replaced.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
In that, in that.
That's why.
It's funny, I acknowledge if it's a non-each other property, it's like some pride of land, but. That H O A is like using.
Maybe that's part of the M O U too, whoever's private.
Like the M O U can't even do the H O A.
Yeah, it could be the responsible party reviewing things, but they probably want to sign off from the resident, even though it's in the right of way, if you ever vacated it, the bone to the middle of the street.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's basically the decision. Don't encourage people to, to build, to plant on the right of way and certainly don't encourage them to build. Uh, so don't replace shoes and I. But that's just.
Yeah, if, if it was, I didn't realize this over the last ten years, for many, maybe it's fair enough, so they.
The old trees were kind of, yeah, scruffy, they ripped everything out, they replanted.
Um, that is a very, that's actually.
Yeah, it, you know, we talked about this in another context before with the fire pit and.
Right.
And making certain that there was some fee that was paid, so, so it was disincentive for not doing stuff without filing a permit.
Um, if this is.
The H O A said that, you know, hey, we're willing to make a donation, willing to.
Well, that, that, no, that looks really bad.
Well, it, but, but you wouldn't get a fee, I mean, if you take the wall out, then.
There's no fee.
Nothing, yeah, the trees.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if everyone wants to leave the wall in, then that's.
So the A one, the A one was, was done, right, and have the utilities signed saying, no issue.
I can't imagine they would sign that.
So they're just secondhand with information from these guys, any of the utilities, something that they didn't.
They were all marked, uh, but.
That's something that happened.
We have to say it over them.
Yeah.
They're gonna do what they want, how they want, right? They claim that utilities just said, but we're not gonna touch it until we have problems and when it happens, we'll rip it out, and that'll be that. Uh, but.
But that can be representation in the M O U, that they represented to us, when after the, after the lines were drawn by the utilities, utilities said to them that there was exactly that, and that's part of the.
But there's an issue that we're on the book. No, I didn't.
No. No. And also this is definitely a bomb post, whatever, that we need to protect ourselves, nonsense.
That's my point.
Do you agree with putting it in? I mean, that, in terms of a shift of like indemnification or liability, it's only as good as their insurance. They're gonna be around, because it's not like it's a big company, they're, they're homeowners association.
Well, they should.
Assessments, so it might be like an impart, like. Least would shift it in the first instance and have to go up to their insurance or otherwise. Well, since it says you can't do it.
Can they make us an additional insured on the policy, the C D L policy, whoever's sure of interest in this?
Cover is there.
Yeah.
Like, if not, I, I.
I don't know, like, he was covered. And it's not even their property, right, so it's probably not. So.
It's not, I mean, it is like a last school hypothetical where it's a best, it's no.
There's no gas line to reach break that?
No, electric, the, I have on, our underground, that's okay. And water.
I don't know, like the pipe breaks through the tree, like. It'd be able to deal with it.
It's not, it's not our.
So where would be the potential viability if tree falls on a car driving by?
Anywhere, but I think, oh, that's not it. Yeah, okay, so, uh, how, I mean, how does everyone feel? Three or three sides.
Yeah, right, it deserves. And you have to know or should have.
But you checked that the responsibility for the watering, taking care, the kind of, the defense, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We did take care of it, we should have it.
Yeah. Well, it's an argument, not a good one, understabbing.
If this kind of set the standard for.
Well.
Right, yeah, we should. So, look at this, learn. Uh, user comprehension approach.
There are, there is a house at the end of the, Ammar, what, what is it, Grand School? Uh, yeah, this is, yeah, is it West Ammar? Yeah, West Ammar and Grand School, like, there are lots of trees, I'm pretty sure they're all the right of way.
Is that the right, is that right?
There.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so is our.
Oh, yeah, that's been a pain forever.
Similar, right?
Yeah.
Actually.
That is the right way.
Yeah.
More information, you'll know. I've got the option, it's supposed to be sixty, in the north.
It goes like that.
All right, what was that?
General location.
Well, that, that's something I was thinking about. You all know I, I like these trees on Oakleaf Lane and I don't think there's, I think it's a good policy to keep them for lots of reasons. But I want to be very careful in crafting this agreement, because like you said, we need to set a standard. And also the fact that we're setting this standard, kind of like we did for the, uh, the required that you've been, where are we or how are we memorializing the league? So we just.
Yeah, there's not an ordinance that we have that somebody can go up and blow up. Not so much precedent setting, like somebody's a cop and say, you did it there, you have to do it here, every case is different, property's different. You don't have, you know, a, a, they can't file, name is actually saying you have to compel them, give me this permit. You don't have like a permit process, um. Discrimination, well, because I spoke out against something and then you told me I had my trees, but somebody else was in favor of something, you wanted their, yeah. So there's always that possibility, I think that's the spike. You know, we've not really had a written standard or policy, we don't really need one, um. Set up, uh, some level of institutional memory, staff, others, how we've dealt with them in the past. And it's like, it does become a three-point thing, and then you say, well, maybe it is. You know, look at the ordinance and compare to others, it isn't too profane right now. You know, if these are planted, we treat them as street trees that the borough just maintains. In that nature. There are some, are there some exceptions that could be written in the ordinance that just don't, no encroachments in the right way. That, that's a part of that, but.
It sounds like there's aggravating and mitigating sort of.
It always. Something is different there.
But for this, we're, if we enter this M O U, we're not setting ourselves up. Or someone else saying, we do have to treat me that, that way, right, on one hand.
They, they can say that, they can do that.
But we're not.
There any type of, they could tell you at all, I mean, as they. Can file some type of discrimination suit, then, then.
But it would be, uh, uh, addressed with the, just.
On the flip side of that, how do we keep track of who's standards we're setting for ourselves and for the borough? Just like institutional memory?
Yeah, maybe we're focusing on internal policies.
And we record them when they're.
Origin, we have a record.
Well, we record them for, when they're associated with the actual property, it's a means of running through the property. This one, if it's in the right of way, even though that property owner may have a claim, we're supposed to record it against their property.
So would someone have to remember, I mean, we do right now, but someone would have to remember, if this came up again in four years. How would we be like, what, what did we do, whomever is on council, how would we do that, or we would be reinventing the wheel?
Where's the time capsule?
Right. Now, I mean, we could look into, I mean, Andy's system in terms of either construction files or development files. I don't wanna go into citation files, but, but there is a filing system for, uh, it's not Oakleaf, I forget, but the Heritage Hills or Heritage Estates, because the homeowners association, that's the thing that they, they had it there. We, the similar ones we have, there's some sidewalk agreements with the H O As where Borough owned a lot. Um, you can be free to put the sidewalk in there if the H O A is responsible for it and does maintenance, case of that nature. So those aren't afforded, they're licensed of some type. Who's kept somewhere in the borough's filing system for that community, if we have one down to that level. There, but then, um, whether you search anything on your network or otherwise on, on tree encroachments and pull up a bunch of agreements.
Well, you can remember everything, so that, that works.
That's, do we, do we have like, yeah, the Borough Leader, it's in M O U, like, motion number, whatever.
Yeah.
We've had this, right?
We do.
Don't we have to do that here?
You would, yeah, we would have a motion, um.
There's a record.
There is that level, but. Lot of minutes to.
Right, it's, it's, there's a record for sure, but practically, how do we?
Yeah, we create an internal record of like, exceptions, every time we have one, something like this, there's an Excel file, it's just.
Definitely for what I think.
That's what I did previously, council always gets these oddballs that are exceptions. And we just created an internal record, every time there was one, argument of the day, the past, what it's for. And so then if you ever needed to figure out something weird that you couldn't get now, that you check that first.
So we have the fire pit and we have this one.
That's right, we have two more for your, for your spreadsheet. Okay, that's, that was my question.
So I guess that's right, we're looking at here is the fact that, that they're gonna represent to us the utilities, that don't worry about it, that what we have to fix it, we'll just tear it out. We're not gonna pay to put it back again.
Even regardless, we have no say or power, utilities doesn't, their opinion doesn't really matter to us.
Yeah. Well, we're looking at for safety, yeah, we're sure that something's gonna blow up or something was gonna break and it would be our problem in our right of way. And now what I'm hearing is secondhand, it's not.
And it's just on record, the best part, understanding of the fact.
Yeah.
A lot of recitals in the M O U, the history, the citation, right, the one call results, or so.
And who signed that, on their hat?
I mean, I, it's a H O A, uh.
Yeah, we saw it's gonna be three parties, it's gonna be.
Yeah, sure, I mean, was she the most recent, yeah, but she seems, excuse me, she seems to be on.
Yeah.
The Borough of H O A. And.
The woman who owns the actual.
And that's everybody that's a necessary party to this, there's nobody else floating around.
Well, indeed, indeed, it's, it's, you know, the guy in process where you have to.
Not a necessary party.
Okay, so, this is, we'll, we'll start drafting, I don't know, we'll. Got some similar types of agreements, but we'll be doing some from scratch, uh. Set up a separate invoice number, we can tell them to.
There's need to depraise when we go past two. Also, float it, float it out to us, because I'm sure we'll.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, this one, they're gonna need more eyes, so it's not gonna be ready for the fifteen.
When, when do we remember, what did the letter say to them was the deadline that we were coming to cut them down?
I think it was.
It was November one.
We should, we should probably update that correspondence, just to say, while we're.
Considering.
Yeah, while we're considering the.
Put a little. We, will we.
Halloween.
And we're pushing up the wall.
I put my mask right.
And when, I think when the M O U comes out, when you say take the wall down.
Yeah.
As part of your consideration for the, for the, I'd say, I'm. The walls.
I think the wall thing bothers me because it's a physical structure. I can drive, I can drive up through the corner of my street, can't have it, but I can find eight of them in that tree under the right of way.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
But the structures bother me a lot more.
Yeah.
There is a fence, we make them move, it's in the right, there's a wall. Physical structure is not a piece of vegetation, so.
Yeah, so we have a fire pit.
You're good with that?
Well, it's just, it's like.
And agreeing.
Yeah, that was really in a, wasn't the roadway right away, the, the branch right away, but still.
I would agree with Tom and in terms of like we talked about, the wall is probably not going to be causing any damage, but I think we should be setting a standard that like absolutely, maybe we'll give you a little leeway on trees have been existing for a long time, but but you can't build something.
Don't, you know, don't plant more trees, but.
Right, right, this is a grandfather situation, Tom.
They've already talked about it, you know, if the wall can. Some might do, yeah, bushes and flowers on the.
Yeah, we're like, eh, no need planting.
I think they have a wall on the other side, right?
Yeah, which is on the plains, yeah, I mean, this, this wall, this wall doesn't have worries on its maze. To keep all, yeah.
Well, they've passed permission, anything, and.
They just.
That's honestly even in the, I embrace.
If you drive through the borough, you're gonna find lots of trees that are.
Yeah, yeah. In the right. Those are like the best example. Okay, I mean, it's not that.
Yeah, we're gonna do case by case basis, because everything's slightly different.
Well, you do have at least a solid.
Framework.
Framework.
Yeah, I think, I think I do.
Yeah.
And I think it should be acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, hardly not like the wire and come down, but so, some of them didn't seem to have an issue.
No, and we have, we've talked about multiple times, like the wall, more than likely gonna have to go.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a surprise.
Yeah.
No.
Freeze or the.
Right, no one's saying, in Franklin Park, we need more walls, we can never say.
Problems about property liability, sure.
Right, um, so rates have gone up, like everything has. Um, our, uh, our property and liability trust package, which includes property from the breakdowns in marine crime, general liability, automotive liability, automotive physical damage, exits liability, even up thirteen percent, seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand, three reasons it's gone up. Uh, ear insurance raised the rates for the first time in twenty years. Um, we insured Acorn Park with all of our new equipment, which is significant.
We insured Acorn Park with all of our new equipment, which is significantly more expensive, and we added vehicles and haven't sold them yet, so. Uh, that is where we're sitting.
Can we shop it around?
Uh, we're in the hub, so. Kind of, kind of deal. Best rates, um, as far as a public official liability and employment practice liability, uh, we went up. Less than just a, yeah, less than.
Well, that's gonna be.
Less than five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and then police liability, state say.
English accreditation, we may have to look at discounts.
Supposed to.
Yeah, we stayed flat, maybe we're going up.
You had a question about a foundation?
Yes, the, did you get a discount?
No, is the answer.
The homeowners not get discount being in a, he's telling.
Do you know, is there some insured retention on the conference and general liability policy? SIR means you pick your own defense counsel, if you pay the first five thousand, you can also spend if you're some.
I don't, I don't think there is, you don't forget.
So what happens is if you do the SIR, I don't know, it's an option, if you do the SIR. Your five or ten thousand yourself, and buy the burrow, you go, I'm just gonna settle this with you, and that's the end that we're claiming. But after that, you also gets to pick. Your defense counsel.
I don't know, you would know more than I would for the hog.
For twenty plus years. Boroughs that I defended, they all had a SIR. And they were typically spent, they, after they got the, the, um. Political subdivision toward claims act notice, the six month notice, they would reach out to the claimant, they would say, we have. Twenty-five hundred, five thousand to settle it, take it or leave it. You know, in like nine out of ten cases, if these were small claims, they would just take five in case we go away. It's a way to get rid of small claims without dealing with defense counsel, plus you get the privilege of picking the defense counsel. Which might be good, right, Max? So it's worth looking into.
Jack, just, uh, for the insurance, I was talking earlier, actually, you reminded me, cyber insurance.
Um, the quote came in, uh, that what, six hundred? Did the best of all we got?
With the fees and things, it was like, I said, sixty-two.
Um, but we need to make changes internally to our operations, everything has to have a two factor authentication. And for everything, so you might think it's hard to get into computers now, and it gets harder. Um, and so, uh, there's definitely that in your email. And the, the quantity of how often you have to do it. Might be some flexibility there, instead of it being every time, maybe.
Once a week sometimes, too, if it's probably once a week.
Yeah, I was thinking once a week, once a month, but try to.
Mine's, mine's once a week.
But I talk to our, we're talking to the police, and the way they do it is, because our computers hooked up to the network. Computer itself is the two factor authentication, so once you're into the hardware, then it kind of covers everything. Um, but I, I don't know if the insurance company.
I don't think they'll buy that, I mean, for software.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I'll have to do it for, specifically they want your email to be two factor.
If you have a stronger policy to that, proxy negotiation.
We went through our tech provider, they also offer cyber, we were hoping to get a good rate, but they know all the energy they're gonna do it, it was. Triple price.
And I saw it sixteen thousand, that that. Sounds wrong to me, but yeah, they're projects. These are talking like, you know, five or seven thousand. What we're usually talking about, so I don't watch, it's not projects, it's, it's a company that, it's projects is completely separate from the insurance company. All projects, they've built their security stat based on that insurance company's requirements. So that because they have that stat, they're technically already qualified. So I, I, Amber's on vacation right now, so I can't really get her, like, get into it in detail. I think there's something wrong there, but I can't prove that's the face of.
Are we super passionate about one of cyber's insurance? So you haven't had in the past, much to tell you, but it's something that, hey, we need to spend this stuff, no.
I don't know what the standard cares for the time.
I mean, what happens if.
Those are the information that's in our network, public record information anyways. You know, like, all of our finances are third parties that are double factor authentication. Double factor.
Any hip of violation possibilities?
Internal, nothing for the residents.
Does, carry those records, they're paper, or digital?
So an employee would be potentially being claimed against us. Well, the other issue is. Um, like being held for ransom, knocking out them, all this stuff, is, that's a liability there too, right? Yeah, so. I mean, do we have, do we have redundancy and all that, like if somebody came in and.
We have, we have a certain level of redundancy, but I mean. Somebody, a type of a restart, can you figure out, you figure on restarting in a week, about two weeks or?
Yeah, like, what's the time here, like, is it, so, so is it? It's not cloud, the redundancy is not cloud based, you can't just go to a virtual system and just hook a switch and you're back.
Right, so right now, we are maintaining the, the, the hard copy as well as the virtual copy, basically what we're doing. Uh, the restoration, the rebuild, back to the whole parts of the, 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 the race versa. You know, you're gonna have a lot of time and resources to have. Uh, the other thing is, and this was something that they came, they brought up. Even though we don't store the data, if we collect the data, we're not, we're, we're responsible for notifying everybody that's. It's true, that they changed the notification log.
Even though we're storing it somewhere else.
And even if it's public information, we collected it. We're responsible for.
There's gonna be costs associated with that.
Like the bad, like company or stuff in the food or tart, if it's requesting the person's save address. Yeah, there's a lot of people there.
Dog, we're about go. Yeah, that's all.
So can we check out, uh, to the way that communities, like the pine or.
Marshall.
Marshall or like, like Henry's, whether they have like that some similar policy for their sub security or something.
You can't see what they're doing to cyber.
Yeah. Doesn't really cost a lot of money.
Would you know what's up the two factor, uh, litigation? It is, it is very much everyone, so this would be a good privacy.
I think implementing is the right thing to do. I just need to know what kind of we have. Have had a few employees.
I need to get the card yet.
They have an issue with using their own personal. That were two factors. So I don't know, I don't know how we can. So, but the majority would be, okay. Kind of a BYOD type of thing. Can we get a token? What we done in the past is we just have to be the borough phone number, that ran through the phone, we're getting four digit number and not being. At home, that's what we do at the fire station, zip down to the fire station. And whoever happens to be there answers the call. And if they know what's going on, so if they go start doing what they know.
Yeah, sure.
Um, can we? Okay, then we use our device. But if they're.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying out there, I've had two people again, and they come in and they're not the even person, so it's.
He said they almost, Jason, same, I said that, a few years ago, they almost got all of their accounts with phishing emails that F and B.
Yeah, it only takes one employee that doesn't know what's going on to drop the.
Yeah, there was an email to Crystal, a month or two ago.
Yeah, because I, I.
We, we got one about Zach's salary, they wanted. One for Christmas. And like, I just left a email with him, so like.
Yeah, I emailed him, like, hey, I left this email, just checking, nope.
And we, we can take an additional step, but it's. The security with a lot of those phishing emails, we can limit the number of. Email services that can send emails, but I mean, we're a public entity, so. Yeah, just occasionally, once a week then.
I, I would say every time we log in, I feel like every.
Well, here, here's, here's the challenge that I get the most feedback on our bathroom, is we already have this screen set to log off. So if you get a phone call with a resident, everything, seventeen times a day, I've got two packs up in the.
If, if you're in the borough, you should have to, is that, is that an idea there or?
No, if you're cloud based, you're probably gonna two FA for your.
Yeah, and you're launching your software, and why do you put in the two FA or not?
The software I would hope, right?
You're gonna be, your machine's already logged in, you log in on two FA, so your machines are.
It should probably be a machine, because you don't two FA it, and then you get a Chrome browser and.
I'm not sure, whatever, I just need the guidance, I'll do it, I'm happy to do it, if you guys want to, there's one for you guys.
And what's the safest place to put the two FA authentication step? You say when you go to the machine.
Insurance requires a email, right, insurance requires your email, be two FA protected.
And, and that can be done at the machine level, or you have to actually have like your Outlook.
That was the question I needed to go back to them, is blocking the machine acceptable without locking the account?
And we don't know yet.
We need verification on what they were really asking.
But we can't answer.
Well, follow up thing figured out, then, do we, do we wanna decide here, if that, do we decide general?
You decide here, you decide in two weeks. I mean, I would like to decide.
What, what do you recommend or your advice?
Uh, every time we sign everything.
I would agree, I, I feel like that is just the first. I get it, if you step away for thirty minutes, but the situation.
Uh, if we're just signing into the email, you don't decide, you really don't log into the email holder, just on our log.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have the same. So we, we upgraded, and as long as you're on the same, you shouldn't have switched out these.
Is it making government, like the Microsoft, that it hit or not? Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, the state.
I mean, there are other options, yeah, that's, that's, anytime we log in, or anything, information, anything of work. Every time, two factor, and if you, for some reason, step out, do it again.
I, I, I know with the, with the government system, when I, when I use like the, the USPTO, which is the admin trademark office. It uses two FA and it does it every single time, so if you walk away for ten minutes and signs you up to that, you're not assigned back to me. There's no way anybody can commentate your account if you've got two FA, um, controlling them to lock you. There's no way. They'd have to have your phone in front of their face, so.
Okay, so it requires a pretty email. Uh, yeah, they, you're saying every time. Yeah, or once a week for, or daily.
Why, oh, do we think every time it's a cumbersome, is that?
Probably sometimes. We talk logging in, so, like, let's buy login, is it stay logged in all day, or like, I walk away, my screen goes black, like. Type back in, so I have to log back in again, and then like, we, your phone pop all day, you know, I need.
Shouldn't be locked anyway?
It locks differently, it goes, it doesn't.
If, if you come back again, log back in, it should still be logged in.
You're not, you're not, I don't know, yeah. You must still be logged in, right, it is right now, your machine will lock, but you're not locking any of your software, right?
So what do you, you just have energy, computer tap for to get back in, you don't have to move that.
And then you have access to all of your software.
Practically how often, I mean, is that, I mean, you guys are gonna have them moving around regularly, yeah, several times a day, okay.
I mean, in general, you're logging machines, your machine when you walk away, right? That's, that what happens here.
You locked the machine, you walk away? No, because we're.
There's security, no, you can get back in here.
Back the hall, we have, you know, people have to be let in, and we generally, you know. If, if somebody's here working on something, like, you know.
But, but, you know, I don't know, like ten minutes for something, right?
Read with what Kathy's saying to a certain extent, but also have to remember, we have laptop computers and we have workstations that are tied to the network. Laptop computers go outside the building. They go outside the building, outside of all those securities.
Times of work, I don't know, I like to stop night or.
Weekends, especially if you're off Mondays, could usually, I get on and checking outside the hospital.
Okay, so.
Could just.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I understand, we're talking about email, right? But doesn't, uh, doesn't Office three sixty five, or whatever the other phone themselves. No, is there a way to log into the entire system that we have leased? And use all the software that's in the, so when you put your two factor authentication into log into that three sixty five.
Switching, you're already using Office three sixty five cloud entirely, you're not installing. As that's possible, you have to switch everybody that already used the cloud.
That's too much for everyone.
But, but even now, if you log into the email, you can access OneDrive, you can access.
Yeah, yeah. So it does for everyone, yeah, sure, that's what, I mean, when I use my own device, I have to log into factor authentication and it pops up and. All happened to.
Okay, so once a day?
Trying to feed this to that, but as just the email or is the machine?
The email, email, log in once a day, two factor.
Yeah, that works.
Because right now we have none of them.
Right, when you log into your computer, you open your email.
It's not the threshold for cyber insurance.
All that factor for email.
Glad we landed the plane, yeah.
They would like it on everything, but.
You have it on everything else, but are you? Your Office three sixty five account in general, the computer has the two factor. But we're set up like a hundred eighty days, we only have a few that like twice a year. And it's just a matter of what setting they set down.
You could set it up for. Daily.
You set up every time, screen time time.
Everybody looks out, but putting down, I'll take all.
That part I can do it every time.
We'll do council first. For thirty days, don't worry about it.
Well, even a stock clock's good twice a day.
All right. So we'll do this, and we'll public insurance, and have fun, maybe. With the cyber insurance, are we, we're getting it, or what are we, yeah, I think next.
No more chairs in this room of all of them.
I just threw, uh.
Cool, uh, is that anything else?
Good for me.
All right, yeah, all right.
Sometimes I'll bring you good.
Okay, uh, next item is a overall update. Um, there's no Lawrence from Tom and Laura, thank you for doing this.
That's honestly, everybody's welcome.
Everybody's welcome.
And uh I'll I'll try to help you guys. I've been quite lost three times, but it's in the back and uh.
Hey, what about this?
Yeah.
Well, Laura and I did talk the other day and we talked about trying to. We can do this. Not violate any rules. Bring the seven candidates up to the running, just in case the public would like to ask any questions, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make them the focus of anything. We'll just say that these are the people that are running that we would like to. But we're certainly not gonna promote any of them or.
If you would say that the disclaimer, we're not promoting them.
No, we're just like, we're the seven, if you wanna know who's gonna be on next mission.
They took community members that have volunteered to do this work and.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems okay.
Different than the poster.
Yeah.
It should be, I mean, they're. That it's serious about doing, it should be a decent meeting. Learn as much as they can and we believe people as they can.
Yeah, that's.
Give them a heads up, that's good.
I think a lot of people will feel better if they know their people with integrity and they're doing good.
Name with a face and all that stuff.
And and Kathy and I have worked on setting up the three successive weeks legal notice. It's be in the post gazette and posted at each.
Deal not electronic.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and find out, was this what we were in, like talking, Aaron, and we don't know like what interest we don't know, yeah, we're falling places, so I have to use the investigation. In the lab. If they were, they would post. Why are you second there?
We can project that. And they should buy the.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I'll probably reach out, that's what I think.
He gets close to us and on post three recent minutes, yeah.
You know.
A lecture.
Yeah, yeah.
We had to run three ads.
Production says they give it out question there and.
And then as we start running. Was it next? Next week, the ninth, the sixteenth, and the twenty third. And then they go the direction we could post that after. About every. Now it's off.
Yeah. Make the rails.
With the contact?
Uh yeah, so uh let's see. Of course, with the council mayor, uh.
Got you.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh I don't know what we were paying Justin, we said here at the time. He's just not wanna be here. Do we meet him every time when when there's nothing to add and.
Yeah.
The last several. Always says, I don't know anything that. Um but I think we're probably paying on no one but to do it.
Can we just take the report, we just take the report, like and we get our work pocket, if somebody thinks there's a question for we should. Just say, hey, we have a question.
Maybe, I mean, I think he asked me back, he reminds us.
Yeah. It was somebody was in Franklin Park or something.
Here now they're. But he looks miserable.
That's just not gonna.
We had done it for a while, the if um. You know, if they were needed.
Yeah.
Um we would ask Justin. I think we're not, rising priest came, Justin, I think the bubble was a much more, is it probably paying, I thought of it, it's so you can attend.
Let's not do that.
Just.
I mean, I'm not thinking with you. There's nothing irresponsible.
I know you guys can see him, but it's just. But. Yeah, I mean, like looking into, I mean, he does not want to be. I guess, um.
Um, yeah. The only thing would be, yeah, I mean, somebody just needs to let me know. Um. I don't send him an agenda, like he's not expecting to be here. So um. You know, I need to know, I guess, I will not send him agendas in the future. Um I can let him know that, or let him know when we want him to attend. So if there's, you know, something that DMs for. Let me know and I'll make sure I send him the agenda, he knows he needs to attend. If confirmed, we pay him to be here, I think, right? I assume it's a part of the fees.
They'll be port to port. Couple time he gets some.
You have a retainer with them, I believe.
Well, let's check on that, cuz. You have to pay him, that'd be a miserable, I don't know that we need to reward.
I'm pretty sure when we interviewed engineering firms. Three years ago or whatever that was. I'm pretty sure that. At least one of my both of them have a retainers or one of the ones.
Yeah, I think there's a meaning, right, no, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, but you just got there, new proposals, even if they said the first time, didn't ever said that.
Yeah, we need to look at that, cuz if it's built in.
I don't think. I'll I'll.
Like an hourly rate. Well, I can tell you based on the uh. Resolution we do every year. I know.
Maybe it's.
Hey, I think that's just, that's got all the meanings and.
Could they happen, okay?
Yeah, we don't often seem to have questions, but.
We have standing monthly meeting, we have a region. Just on the night. That's taken over the second Tuesday, or Wednesday, eight thirty A M. And our forum, but if anybody else wants to. Listen in. Yes. We do go through each project and.
Yeah, I mean.
They're good moves, so.
Right, so when he's when he's engaged, he's, I like to actually like.
Yeah.
Before paying, whatever.
Yeah. Over and about two, for sure. There's the new chairs.
But uh he didn't start putting descriptions on billing by name of. Uh yeah, that's gonna mention, and so. Yeah.
Hit them for a grumble.
But there's there's other stuff. But uh, yeah. Well, if you can.
I found it, I thought the media was something.
I I could swear them, yeah, well, that is, I mean, at least the.
The original, yeah, I haven't seen their agreement, so the original.
Like. Borough engineer, it says retain here. Um. Yes, I I keep thinking C E C is not retained.
They might just have been one of them, and find it in our system.
What's on thing, Borough engineer, there he's the stormwater engineer, the Borough engineer has a retainer.
Yeah, that's much of them.
I don't think. He does, not called out.
The finance, who's talked about it.
Maybe. Well, I mean, he just said the last bill set down dollars.
I mean, it makes the difference if we're paying for it as part of the package anyway.
That's fine. All right, my second thing, and you know. So is is relief bags, um what we talked about last year is the weeks that you take off, it's a good review, you know, how we, you know, thing. They they were stacked up following into the street. The last year we talked about not taking those weeks off, I don't know what that'll do. Get the schedule and really keep that. The artist made the schedule. Uh you can do plug, but I'm sure I.
Well, it's already impressed, you know, newsletter.
Yeah.
Well, can't you just have bonus collect, you're just saying have bonus collections, people, it's a surprise, cuz people are gonna put their relief bags out.
Right, that's that's the thing, they put them out, they.
So if somebody comes along, you fix them up, great.
But it's waste management, it's not, so they're gonna want more money to add, but. And they already have. Staffing issues with collecting stuff.
They've been skipping collections in my neighborhood, yeah. Yeah, it's like.
Their staffing. The leak bank.
Yeah. And then we. We.
Looked thing on that we got back up. People put their bags out anyway, even though they're not coming. And they're.
Yeah, the. Tank of tracks. We'll see what.
So how does the bags sit and then Halloween is a great time to kick the bag over.
Or it's wet.
Yeah.
That's what they tell people, to put them out on Mondays, but they don't.
Right, they don't, they put them out in trash.
Well, they put it on Monday and they will come collect them. Those actors.
Very. Uh can you get a pull behind that trailer, like a shredder? Yeah, it's barely season, so you want like. Going eighteen thousand, that's my whole line trailer. It's better than like that actual backdrop where you're gonna spend a hundred fifty thousand, that's how.
Our residents would be so exotic, like if if we let them like.
Five, three, one on the road.
Yeah, that's. Like Ross. Yeah, it's Ross, where they throw their. They're blowing them out into the street, they're like halfway into the road and then.
You're done. You have anything?
Um no, I just, a couple of good things born out, the police have really been watching speeders in our area before last time, I think it's from. I think I did reach out to. Maybe it was to reach two weeks ago, I think I talked to you on the deck about whether we got any results from the grant to try to get someone knows. Your speed signs.
We, I haven't heard anything, I reached out or uh Arvin's office reached out to us uh to check in on those grants to give us a update. I gave them all the information they wanted, I haven't heard anything back from them yet, they were gonna try and notice things wrong.
Yeah, and I found a couple residents contacting me, I think I, well, you sure that would be too bad.
Yeah.
These seem you on, so anyway, if we do hear anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, that's all, thanks.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Do you do you get emails from the club, you would hear an alternate on the primary, I've I've not heard one in a month and a half, two months.
I usually get it as the alternative, so I don't, you're right, I don't think I've seen one for a long, long.
For some reason, I'm not sure.
There there is some time. Yeah, there's not a blank window this summer, cuz my first meeting was until September, or July.
Okay.
Uh but.
All right, I haven't seen an email.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had my time remaining already inside of the zoo, that you guys should have or have had.
I don't, we've never seen them once, they always. Send it to me.
Yeah, it's not always we have one, but all right. Cool. Okay, cool, uh definitely.
Yeah.
Mayor?
I'm good.
All right, Laura?
Um just briefly, we talked about um. Uh property over off the. Like debit, where there were, there were some grading issues. Where are we on that, we, did we ever respond to that?
Yeah, Andy, it was, I think. Or. The the property on the debit, it was all set down, one over there. Thank you, no no violations, right?
With which property, well, we got the one we're we're dealing with all the time. Okay, I I was right there, I got hurt. Yeah, I didn't tend to communicate with them, we never got to whoever, I think they had a request, you wrote a request for them, they go over the local property, they never responded to that.
Didn't you just, didn't you just expect it last week? Neighbor lets you go on the property. Yeah, 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 we took a bunch of pictures. Um there's definitely been some more work done over there, but. There's nothing that I can see to. Put a finger on it, so. But on top of that, there's been a lot of work done over there, uh. We talked about using a drone, we may just have that problem solved tonight, and I'm um in a drone situation where we can take a look at stuff like that.
We're on that.
Giving a presentation, he sets in the zoning officer. Zoning is a civil enforcement action, it's not criminal. Property maintenance code, grading. Take the training, figure what happens, they put it on somebody else's property and see.
Did we respond to the resident, I don't remember.
Yes, they are involved.
Okay. Gotcha, okay, just so make sure that.
When you were saying the lower end, I was picturing a lower, so I'm trying to understand. But that's what we talked about going over and touring to see to see how much that is paid.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh just real quick, uh it is sign season, as you all know, so. I believe just a reminder. Even friends that have signs. Keep it twenty.
Well, it's on on a borough road, you gotta keep it basically twelve and a half feet off the asphalt. Uh on a state or county road, behind the utilities, like guideline from Tim from the signs is one behind sidewalk, behind the utility pool, behind the fire hydrants. Uh then I don't mess with it, but if it's. Next to on or in front of. If uh the policy is, I I touch it, I take.
We put political signs, there are any gray areas there, cuz I was always under the understanding that political signs.
Can't be in the right way, I can already list, uh we we don't. Enforce, you know, that can't be up more than thirty days, it has to be down, you don't have to pay any fees, so that might, so we would deal with that. Long restriction that is can't be in the right.
Is it, is it constitutional?
Or anything.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is constitutional.
Yeah, 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 the big old.
The bush up here, unregulated, that may not be in the public. And there's no limit on numbers or anything, there's a billion or more.
It's a lot. Uh. Where's mine? Oh, it's one point nine.
I said the right way.
Oh, okay. The right way.
Notice to everybody, make sure you have that. I told everyone, I don't wanna be the bad guy, but I gotta be prepared. And I was saying on Borough property.
So advertise being on Borough property.
That's good. Uh yeah, that was it, um. I've got some. A collection for you.